I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so our first order is just to accept our agenda, and we're just, I'm going to make one small change, which is going to have comments from the community after our budget presentation, so people can target their questions specifically or comments specifically to the, to the budget presentation. So that would be the only change, Elaine, small change. So can I have a motion to accept our agenda?
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. And I think we're starting with our recognition of our spelling bee winners and runners-up, which is always a fun thing to do. And Joyce is here, which is important. So, over to you.
Yeah, very good. Well, thank you, Ms. Chapnick, for being here this evening and for our students that we're looking to honor. Certainly an exciting event with some great accomplishments. So Ms. Chapnick, if you could please give us an overview of the experience.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So this is so exciting for me, because this is my first opportunity to be principal at Main Street School for the Main Street School Spelling Bee. And it was an awesome experience to watch the fourth graders participate in their spelling bee and the fifth graders participate in a separate spelling bee. Dr. Harrison was one of our moderators, as was Mayor Brian Smith. So it was a really exciting event for everybody, and it was challenging. And leading up to the event, all students who were interested in the spelling bee participated in a written bee. And of the students, we selected finalists, 11 from fourth grade and 11 from fifth grade. And then those students participated in their own, in the fourth and fifth grade spelling bee. So we have some of our, of our winners and our finalists who are here tonight are runners-up. So I'm going to go with, let's do fourth grade first. So I'm trying to see. Josie's here. So Josie Kelly is here. So Josie is the winner of our fourth grade spelling bee. So Josie, you want to stand up? And so Graham Adams is not here. He's the runner-up for our fourth grade spelling bee, but we'll make sure that we congratulate Graham. And for our fifth grade spelling bee, Ariel Lau is here, and she's the winner of our fifth grade spelling bee. And Melissa Kim is here. She's a runner-up for our fifth grade spelling bee. And Sarah Galvagon, who's not here, was also a second runner-up for the fifth grade spelling bee. So congratulations to all of you. You have so much to be proud of. Why don't you stand up and walk up here so the board can congratulate you?
Congratulations. Can I give it to him now?
Yeah.
Here you go. Congratulations. Congratulations. Just.
Congratulations.
Not only are we impressed by your spelling capabilities, but it takes a lot of courage to go up there in front of the whole school and a number of adults. So many accomplishments, and we are proud of you, and you should be proud of yourselves. So, well done.
I'm just going to give these to Joyce. Continue on next.
Sure. I will move on with a couple of quick announcements, considering we have a very busy agenda. Deliberately kept my comments at the beginning of the meeting a bit brief this evening. And I have to say, when I reflected back to my comments a week ago, which seems like it was only a day or two ago, I opened by acknowledging the weather. And once again, the weather has impacted another week of school. I don't think we've had a Monday in about a month, and we are headed into a break. So we're going to have five consecutive Mondays off.
That's actually a really good policy.
You like that?
People will be happy.
Might be something that you can adapt in the corporate world as well. But we still, just a reminder, we still have two snow days left built in our calendar. So let's keep our fingers crossed that we don't need them, number one, and if they do surface, that we don't go well beyond, too. Also, I would like to just identify that beginning tonight and at future Board of Education meetings, I'm going to provide updates regarding the progress of our bond-related projects to enhance our facilities. We currently are still on track with our estimated approval timeline with the State Education Department, which we originally projected to be 24 to 28 weeks. Our engineers have received some initial rounds of feedback from SED on the work for the athletic fields, and they have responded to those questions. We are also working with our neighbors now in Field Point and with the Village on details related to the Eastfield drainage plan. Our building projects have gone through the administrative review level, and now they're heading into the technical areas where we have experts such as mechanical engineers and plumbers and electricians that review plans. We're anticipating to go through that process in the next two to three weeks. And from there, again, our architect will receive some questions and make any adjustments necessary based upon their feedback. The one area that's good news, we've already received approvals for the work at Dow's Lane related to building out the new space for the district office, the nurses' office, and the school offices. And we've issued an RFP for that work. And tomorrow, in fact, we're actually hosting our first pre-bid meeting for prospective contractors. So we're making good progress right now, and we are still on our scheduled timeline. We will make every effort to keep the public apprised of our progress. We're going to have regular communications, as I referenced here, at Board of Education meetings, and we will also include them postings on our website, as well as the weekly newsletter and Facebook and things of that sort. So we look forward to continuing to update you on our progress there. And then a little bit of a, kind of a framework for some of the discussion in and around budget. We know that so many people in the audience are here and interested for that. So tonight, we're going to talk about curriculum and instruction-related topics. And then at our next Board of Education meeting, which will be March 3rd, we're going to focus more on the operational side of things and employee benefits. And that all kinds, comes together, March 10th, where we take the feedback and consider the conversations that's happened in this room, and I will present a proposed budget, which will go through a few weeks' worth of revision and discussion with the Board of Education as we look to adopt a budget on April 21st. So with that said, I want to encourage all of our community members, whether you have children in the school or not, to attend these meetings. It's important. A lot of important decisions are going to be made for our children and with respect to property taxes. So please, make sure you're tuned in to the conversations. If you're not able to be here in person, certainly watch the videos. You can always email us at the email address of budget@irvingtonschools.org. And then just a friendly reminder to everybody that it is winter recess next week, so enjoy a nice, long week off.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so we are going to postpone the comments from the community until after we have our discussion relating to the calendar and also the presentation, the budget presentation. So I think the mic is yours again to talk about the calendar. For next year. And just to, while Chris is getting September mind, everybody, we're not actually approving the calendar tonight. We're actually just discussing the contents of the calendar, and then we approve it at our next board meeting, which is March 3rd.
So when we think about the district calendar, oftentimes it's a very routine exercise in a school district, where we kind of step back, we look where calendars fall, we look where testing is, we think about where BOSI begins to look to schedule their calendar so we can try to align efforts. And I have to tell you, this year is, is very, very different.
And the clicker's not on?
I know.
Into the battery, Stan?
So when we think about complexities that could arise, this is one year that is loaded with challenges for us. So we step back, and we always come from a foundation. We look to develop a calendar that's going to give us that opportunity to maximize student learning, while trying to find all the opportunities to align with requirements, 180 days that SED mandates, try to work in and around the testing calendar so we don't interfere with the state assessments. We look at contractual obligations that we have. We have to be mindful of federal and religious holidays that impact our community. And then we look for the consistency that I referenced before with BOSI's and neighboring school districts. And I have to tell you, this is one area where there are some significant challenges this year. So in doing so, when we think about what those challenges are, we have a very, very late Labor Day this year. So when we think about those challenges, we accustomed to coming in the beginning of September with our students, we've been bringing faculty in, in the end of August. So that pushes back the start of the school year, which added some complexity for us. And then we look at the other end of the calendar. SED essentially establishes what the last day of school would be for us, which is the rating day, a traditional day for looking at assessments and grading across the state. So we have to look at kind of some of the challenges that fall here, think about where we want to start our teachers, think about where we want to start our children to maximize instructional time, and consider those different impacts. Couple interesting points to make here, as we look to move forward, that if we think about where September 7th really falls, there could be some inherent benefits here. We have many, many construction projects going on, and a couple extra days coming out of the summer could help us not having to alter our schedule if we have any delays in any of the projects, especially those in our school buildings. But if we are also to look to start after Labor Day with students, our February recess that we're going into next week would be at risk. And we'd be looking at possibilities of looking at breaking that up and having a shorter period of time. But then when we look to spring break, where things fall, some districts are looking at trying to do some different things. Right now, in looking at districts around our region, the model schedule that I'm about to present does align with a number of other districts in the area. Importantly, it aligns with BOSI's, because we have students that go into their programs, and then we have host BOSI's programs in our schools. So that alignment really helps families in our community. So if you have a child that's in a BOSI's program and a child that's in the Irvington programs, you're not looking at different break periods. Couple districts are looking at doing something different, and I certainly give some credit to my colleagues for looking at this creatively. They're looking to have two long weekends for spring break time, rather than having one full week. In doing so, they're trying to spread out some of that time. We reviewed that internally, as did some other districts, and we had a lot of concern. We were worried about having two broken weeks or a couple of broken weeks where we could have attendance impacted. So if there's a family that enjoys that traditional spring break and goes on vacation, we worried about families picking and choosing which week they would go away, and we could possibly see poor attendance. So when we stepped back and looked at it and had conversation with our faculty association, we had conversation with the administrators, we felt that it was in the best interest of our students to maintain one solid week for spring. We're also looking at a couple enhancements to our calendar. We always have our complement of superintendent's conference days, but we wanted to look for other opportunities to have more access to our teachers. In this room, over the last year and a half, we've talked quite a bit about the need to access our teachers, for teachers to be able to meet with one another, to plan, whether that is bringing professional development to teachers, whether that is administrators and teachers working together to build the curriculum, for teachers to have horizontal, meaning same grade level, or vertical, cross-grade level, planning opportunities. And in doing so, I would like to propose that we add to our calendar two early release days, and then two early dismissal days that we could use for professional learning opportunities. These are models that are present in many, many other districts, and I've highlighted just the River towns, but when you go across Westchester, you see this in many, many districts. And we're not looking to be as ambitious necessarily as other districts, but it's a step, in my mind, in the right direction. We look at Ardsley. Ardsley has one hour per week where they have access on certain levels. It's an early release. Other times, it's a delayed opening. Dobbs Ferry, you can see, has one hour weekly and one early release day every six weeks. Hastings has one hour monthly and three early release days throughout the year. So you can see, we're certainly not at that end of the spectrum, but we're trying to find that opportunity to have more access to our teachers, to expand professional learning. And as I said, you know, not only are we looking at curriculum development and teacher planning, but we're trying to find opportunities to limit pulling teachers out of the classroom as much as we have along the way, and we think there will certainly be some benefits from that. So I thought I'd just provide one quick little summary and example of the access that we do have to teachers right now, and it's kind of limited, considering the large number, a large amount of work that we have before us. Across the district, at all levels, we have one faculty meeting per month. At the elementary and middle schools, we have one grade-level meeting per week where our administrators are working with the teachers. At the secondary level, that is complemented with one department-level meeting per month. And then we're creative. When we think about opportunities that exist, and I have to say, this, there's a little more flexibility at the elementary level than the secondary level, but we try to claim opportunities to find non-instructional time that's within the contract to work with teachers. So I provide one example. At Dow's Lane, Randy and Meg have teaching time Thursdays, where one Thursday a month, they run PD for 30 minutes after school, and there's other similar structures as that. But we need more, is the bottom line. The level of responsibility we have to improve instruction and enhance learning experiences requires teachers to have more time to plan and more opportunities for professional learning. So this all results in the calendar that you see before you. A calendar that is going to look familiar to things that you've seen in the past, but it reflects the later start in the beginning of the school year that you see, with our teachers and all of our faculty and staff returning on September 1st, and students returning on the 3rd and 4th. You can see that we have Monday, the 7th off for Labor Day. And then we have holidays on the 14th, 15th, and 23rd for closures. You can see the notations on the calendar, aside from holidays, the days with the asterisks. So looking at October 23rd, November, is it November 23rd? October 23rd, we're looking at one of the days for the early release. But all identified, we're looking at spreading them out throughout the course of the school year. This calendar fulfills the 180-day requirement. We also have four superintendent's conference days, which therefore provides us, in the end, with four snow days built into the calendar. So in sum, I think we've made some good opportunities for us. We've constructed a school calendar that certainly provides for a good amount of continuity of learning for our students. We've made best, I think what is the best proposal in dealing with the beginning of the school year, and there's those opportunities for enhancements, opportunities to find more time with teachers to do the important work that we need to do. So this certainly is the calendar that I would like to recommend for board adoption. Certainly open to any question or comment, Mr. Whitney.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison.
Very welcome.
Board members, questions?
I have a couple.
Maria?
First off, the December break, I thought we were getting away from the half-day when we didn't, the half-day didn't fall right before a holiday like Thanksgiving. That Wednesday, we give a half-day because Thanksgiving is the following day. On the December 25th, why are we having a half-day when they're off on the 24th?
It has been a courtesy that was in the contract in prior years when we had done that. How the previous calendars were played out because of where the holidays fell, it wasn't necessary. But this has been a courtesy that has been in contracts many years running, I believe.
Kind of, I don't know. I recall having the conversation that if it didn't fall, two years ago, if it didn't fall before a holiday, it was a full day of instruction. No?
I don't recall that.
I think the history on that is, every certain number of years, we end up, like the last two years, with the two full weeks. So when with the two full weeks, to give that early release day seemed silly. I mean, when people had so much time prior to the holiday. Prior to that, to that, though, for many years, that was there because the 24th is really the first day, really for the holiday for many, being Christmas Eve.
Right.
So I think that was a courtesy that was in place, and it would go off-cycle whenever we would have these stints of the two weeks, which has been the last two years.
And March 25th, because this calendar is built with five snow, four snow days as opposed to five, that we've been, that we've had for the past two years, this year and last year, what's the rationale behind giving this March 25th off when they have the entire following week off?
March 25th.
It's Good Friday. The holiday for schools are traditionally closed.
I don't think my phone is updated.
Easter, Easter Sundays, 27th.
Oh, it doesn't say that in my calendar. All right. That's fine. Yeah, it didn't say that. Okay.
And that's the half, half a day in April is for Passover, I'm assuming.
It was a consideration for Passover. Not something that we're necessarily able to do, but the holidays are so stretched apart this year, where they're normally closer, and there's some overlap. It was something that we thought was a consideration that we could extend.
That's, sorry, that's the 22nd of April?
Correct.
Yeah, Passover is that night, actually.
Yeah, the first.
The Friday night.
Right.
I, just the one thing I'll say is, I actually like that they're coming back earlier in September. I mean, it's kind of broken up, because unfortunately, we need all three days for the Jewish holidays in September this year. We usually get a weekend, we get a little lucky. But, but I actually worry for the kids taking the AP exam, that when we don't, if we wouldn't bring them back, then we lose even more instructional time. So even if it's just them getting situated, I think at least it's, it's two days they won't have to get situated the following week. So I actually think it's a good idea. I really do.
Yeah, thank you. And if I could just add a little color to the conversation with respect to testing, we were looking at that spring break week and trying to find some opportunity to even move it later in the year so we could have a longer run. And some of the discussions that we had is that, looking at state testing for grades three through eight begins in April, generally April 5th. We were comfortable with kids coming back and having a day to get situated, but the challenge was, we're looking at, seeing if there was a possibility of having just a long weekend, Easter weekend, and then pushing spring break into later in the year. But there was specific concern with preparation for AP exams at that point in time, and there was a real benefit that we saw to having that continuity leading up to that.
When are AP exams, sorry?
Generally, looking at the first two weeks of May.
Any other questions?
If the others are done, I have a couple. Well, I guess only one other comment, which is that, is that day before Thanksgiving and having the half-day, do people, is that really, I mean, I would think that that's an inconvenience for a lot of families that travel for Thanksgiving break. And I wonder whether, you know, you've thought about making that a day off? Because I, I don't know what, to what extent kids miss that day, anyway. I know my daughter is missing it.
I don't think we have, and I, I'm sorry, John.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I don't think, we haven't reviewed the data of student attendance on that particular day, but generally speaking, we have pretty strong attendance. I wouldn't say that we're looking at class, I'm looking out to the principals in the room. That definitely, you lose a few children that are traveling, but it's not, it's still, can be a meaningful day, instructionally speaking. If we were to provide a day off, then we would have to look at the calendar and find another day to take back somewhere else. So that would be a conversation about modifying another, another holiday period or adding a day somewhere within the calendar.
And just, what is the process for getting comments and feedback, parental comments and feedback on this before we adopt it?
So we're actually going to send out an e-blast. We have a new email tool that we're beginning to use, a Constant Contact tool, that is the framework for our This Week in the Irvington Schools, that comes out on Saturday mornings. That is a direct blast to parents in the community, and we actually are preparing an email that will utilize that. It'll be posted on the website and in this week advertising this, and certainly, anyone with questions could submit their questions or comments to the board if they'd like.
Comments, okay, okay.
I'll sit.
Yeah.
And I just had one question about the early release days. I mean, that does cause a certain amount of inconvenience, because then, you know, kids go to school and parents have to deal with the fact that they're coming home early. I presume the logic there for causing a certain amount of difficulties is that our teachers will be getting the professional development they need, and more importantly, they won't be pulled out of classes during other time periods, right?
Yeah, that's certainly a part of it. We want to reduce those, the necessity to remove teachers from the classroom.
Right.
So take advantage of additional time.
I guess my question is, that sounds great in theory. Will you actually be monitoring that to make sure that as we've created these additional professional development opportunities for teachers, that we're actually working hard to kind of make sure they stay in the classrooms?
Yeah, I think been a part of our, our plan is to find opportunities to reduce that. I think we've reached a point in a lot of our professional work where we're able to start to pull back on some of that time. But what's really important here is, I don't want to say it's never going to happen. There's, there's opportunities that we have to, you know, really grasp to be able to work with our teachers. But what it does do, it provides opportunity for teachers to be able to meet in groupings, maybe that they wouldn't typically during how a school calendar would work or how the school schedule would work. So it's, it's not, you know, the silver bullet solution, but it's going to be able to improve that one particular aspect of, of our need. And we certainly are going to make a collective effort to ensure that that is impactful in that way.
Yeah, and making sure that teachers are staying in the classroom more frequently than they have in the past.
Yeah, that's the objective for, for the recommendation.
Okay.
Actually, to, just a quick follow-up to that, is actually, it might be interesting also to parents, as well as us, if they knew what the teachers were working on that day. And then all of a sudden, it makes sense versus just this kind of early release.
Right, this veil of professional development.
Yeah, yeah. So I think if they could give some more communication about what you guys are doing, that would be great.
That's a good recommendation.
Yeah, can I just, one more comment on that, and, you know, I think, and also just, also a question, I think, as you know, the, those early release days, I think, can be a particular burden on working, you know, for working parents and, you know, so that, I think that cost should be kept in mind on these days. Those are often the parents you don't hear from as much, but they do bear that burden.
No, I think, it's a point well-made, and I think that's a part of doing, looking at only four days without looking at going.
So, so just to understand, you're adding, you're taking what would have been full days and making them early release days? I mean, how is this working in terms of the math? I mean, are we reducing the number of full days, then, to get these early release days?
Correct. There would be four days where there are students would arrive, two days where students would arrive late, and two days where students would depart early.
But that still counts as a full instructional day from a state perspective. To the 180, that counts as a full day.
It does.
But we're essentially then losing the equivalent of two days of instruction.
Yeah.
Which is why.
Losing four half-days, which is two full days.
Which is why I was saying, the important thing is that teachers are in the classroom more when they are actually.
Yeah, but how do we, I guess my question for our board leadership is, how does the board monitor that? There's probably no way, right?
We could come up, as you said, with a mechanism to communicate this throughout the course of the school year, of course.
I was asking the board leadership.
What were you asking?
How are you planning to monitor this?
I'm personally not planning to monitor it, but.
Just, just, just hope.
Well, no, I, that's why I asked the question earlier, that we need to have our administration monitor it.
And how will you know that they're monitoring it?
I think he needs to do some work on it.
Just work, okay. Right, just wondering.
Well, he can't propose a monitoring solution on the spot. He needs to come up with a solution about how he.
He needs to do it, okay.
How Dr. Harrison would actually approach the, with the building principals, a method of ensuring that the teachers are in the classrooms and not pulling them. method of ensuring that the teachers are in the classrooms and not pulling them out for professional development. Because that's the, that is the contra to giving up two half days.
And this was also part of a curriculum report, committee report, was it our first one, perhaps?
Earlier in the year.
Earlier in the year, um, this was something that was, uh, reported back to the board about the amount of days and time that teachers are, are coming out of the classrooms and, uh, that administration was going to be recommending these early release days to try to help alleviate that.
Right, I guess my concern is how do we, or you as, you guys as effectively the board decision makers, how do you guarantee oversight of this sort of thing? I'd love to hear more about that.
Um, John, I find your question to be a little odd in the sense that we as a board are the ones that ensure, um, oversight of the community and the district. And I don't, I'm not quite sure why you're asking the question that way right now. We were all provided this calendar at the same time and, and he's presenting it to the community right now.
Yeah, I know, but you guys effectively make the decision, I'm asking.
I don't understand that.
I, I would prefer, if there's a conversation that we need to have privately, I'd prefer to do that. I think tonight is a great opportunity to focus on our, our goals and our objectives, looking to move our district forward and we see this as an opportunity to, to work more closely with our teachers. Um, and if we're looking at our kids having, um, competitive experiences with districts around us, um, we have to be considerate of the amount of time other districts are having to work with their children, or with their teachers as well. Um, this is an opportunity that there's no, um, hidden agenda or intent. We've been straightforward from the beginning, I think. Um, commit, I referenced it one time in this meeting, the curriculum committee spoke of it. Um, if there's specific questions that I can follow up with later, I'd be glad to, but I think this is a good investment in our teachers and therefore our children. Uh, if there's concern, I, certainly we can.
No, there's, I have no concern about your agenda.
All right, so I think we, uh, can close this discussion and move on to the, um, to the main topic at hand, which is presentation of our, uh, budget development, including curriculum, technology, PPS, special education and athletics. This kicks off our budget process for the year. And as Chris said, we have, um, a number of meetings coming up, uh, really culminating on March tenth, where the entire budget will be prepared and presented. Uh, and then we will have several meetings thereafter, we'll be discussing changes to the budget over time. So Dr. Harrison, over to you.
So, uh, we're going to do a little clicker change as we move forward, uh, this evening. To.
I don't want to hit it any harder. Oh my goodness. We're going from the Volkswagen to the Mercedes.
So I think in terms of our questions tonight, I'll just add, Chris, that our questions, we will hold the questions, um, from the community, obviously until the very end of the presentation, uh, because we have an actual, uh, agenda item that accommodates that. Uh, from the board, I thought we would get through each section and then have our questions. Does that make sense?
We can work that way or, or do it at the conclusion.
Well, I think it's kind of more relevant to kind of take instruction.
Yeah.
And then get our questions and then move on to the next, uh, topic or subject and, and get our questions.
Is that like proposal by proposal or whatever, I think they have?
Yeah, exactly, that's how we've done it in the past, I, if I recall.
Uh, rather than, uh, just a point of clarity and that saying proposal by proposal versus maybe category by category?
I mean, category by category in the sense of instruction.
Right.
Is a category.
Okay, right. So, um, I ask that you, uh, be patient with us tonight because we have a lot of important things to, to discuss and cover. Uh, Dr. Core and I are, are going to walk through a number of very, very important proposals. Um, but certainly these proposals, as I indicate, are going to be developed through, the budget's going to be developed through a series of public meetings, as I referenced at the top of our, uh, agenda this evening. Um, and in this process, the board and administration is going to engage in a lot of dialogue, but as I said before, it's important that people in the audience certainly weigh in and say what's important to you and, and share your opinions as they relate, um, to your children's education. Um, but I think we kind of want to step back a little bit and, um, we want to think about what tonight means, um, and the sequence of meetings. So when we look at tonight, we look at the next two meetings that are going to follow. Tonight's focusing on what's happening in the classroom primarily. Uh, the next meeting on the third of March is going to focus on kind of the infrastructure in some ways, it's the operational side of the school district. And then when we think about, um, where we're headed on March tenth would be a proposed budget. So it's important for us to gain some initial reaction, um, and maybe some priority, um, on the items that we present tonight because that's all going to inform the work that's going to take place over the next month. Um, we're certainly going to make every effort to answer questions that we can tonight, um, but certainly some are going to be more involved than others and we're going to have to get back to the board or the public, um, and certainly share those responses in writing and, and publish them accordingly. So, um, with that said, when we think about where we are in this process, here's an overview, uh, for you. There's many other public forums that'll be facilitated that I'll highlight at the end of the presentation tonight. But while tonight is maybe in some ways where we formally kick off this process, a lot of it really began last week, when we had our, uh, all of our administrators in the room and had a, a new, uh, work session with our, our Board of Education, uh, where the building-based leaders talked about the work that they've been doing in the school building. Uh, they reflected on budgetary initiatives, uh, from last year and spoke of their progress in those efforts. And then began to foreshadow, um, what they see as the needs and their local initiatives will be. And you'll see that reflected in the work tonight. Um, but in doing so, we approach this with objectives, just like we did with the calendar. Uh, we want to develop a fiscally responsible budget, um, one that is mindful on the impact of the entire community. So we're not just thinking of the folks with children in school, but we're thinking of everybody that supports our schools. But we also want to look for opportunities, um, for enhancements. We want to think about where we can expand student experiences, um, build upon our curriculum work, um, seek to continue to support professional development, but importantly, we want to maintain and improve our facilities. Um, and when I look at this next bullet here, sustained required and valued services and programs, I have to tell you, I wrestled where I wanted to put required and valued in that sentence. And when I look at it now, um, I think value needs to come first. Uh, but unfortunately, we're driven by a lot of requirements and it's just the structure of being a public entity, the requirements that come down on us. Uh, we certainly have responsibility morally, ethically and legally to educate all of our students with special needs, but we need more funding and support from both the state and federal government. Um, and because of that lack of support, um, there's challenges that we face. Um, but we're going to continue to provide high-quality programs for all of our students. Um, we want to make sure we're maintaining those things that we value for our kids and thinking about AP courses, or thinking about honors electives, all those, um, enriching experiences with athletics, the play, music instruction, choral productions. But we also want to think about those other things that we've heard loud and clear in this room over the last couple of years and think about how folks value, um, a service like the bus monitors that we provide for our children. So in doing so, we have these challenges that I started to allude to. Um, we have to think of limitations as a result of the tax levy cap and a lot of good has come out of it. Um, but it does make things difficult for a school district. Um, right now, um, my third budget in, in Irvington, um, but the first time I'm facing some real uncertainty around state aid. Um, the governor's withholding state aid, uh, runs right now, um, as a part of the political, uh, wrestling, wrangling that is going on in Albany. Um, he's proposed a reform agenda that has some, many, a number of, uh, very strong initiatives tied to that. Um, we're not sure what's going to come out of it. Um, limited opportunity for our legislators to be able to alter what those objectives may be. Um, but Governor Cuomo has told us, uh, he's told everybody, I've seen it on national news, that he is not going to release the aid runs until everybody's going to support what his reform agenda is. Um, so I had the good pleasure of sitting in a meeting with Senator Stuart Cousins on Friday afternoon. And in that meeting, she talked about some of the harsh realities around this, uh, but said there's still some room for work, still some room for compromise behind the scenes. Um, as being a leader in the Senate, she spoke about the communication that she had directly with him just days before, um, and was soliciting ideas from superintendents and board members that were invited to this meeting. Um, so I think she walked away with some ideas, she jotted down some notes and stuck them in her purse before she left. Um, so hopefully she's going to come back, go back with her partners in both houses and find some opportunity to work with the governor, to come up with some opportunities, uh, to work on those reform agenda items, but also to begin to release the state aid. Um, there's been some question, um, about how much state aid we're going to get. Um, we've, we're moving forward in our thinking, we're planning as if we're not getting any new state aid. Uh, but one thing that has been debated is whether or not the, uh, GEA is going to be eliminated, um, and whether that is done, so if they're going to restore back to full funding, if they do it, is it going to be a part of the state aid increase, state aid increase or something else? Uh, it's unclear at this point in time. Uh, but, so we're moving forward. Uh, we're trying to maintain a responsible, a tax rate and in doing so, with all those challenges that we face, uh, pension costs, um, health benefits, um, salary requirements that are negotiated, uh, managing our debt service and the many, many unfunded federal and state mandates that we will talk about throughout this presentation. So when we think about this, um, the structure, uh, the board asked, um, at the beginning of the year for a bit of a streamlined process. So rather than beginning, um, early in, in January or late in December, uh, we've pushed back the calendar, we've kind of condensed these meetings. So what you see tonight is going to be really the combination of two meetings that we had last year. So there's going to be a lot of information, um, to process. But in this structure, um, we're going to provide some overviews, there's going to be some comparisons, um, we're going to compare the, the variances between two different budgets, what we have and what we're proposing. Um, we've itemized, uh, outlines of each budget category. Um, we do have supporting documents that are available, some are in the back of the room, others will be posted on the website for the public to review. And at the end of the day, we're going to see where all this shakes out. We're going to think about the next two meetings and we're going to see what the impact is that we'll see on March tenth. So with that said, tonight, we're going to focus on things that impact the classroom. We're going to think about curriculum instruction, technology, pupil personnel services and special ed, and of course athletics. So when we think about this tonight, when you think about each of these categories that we're going to talk about, um, you have to understand that there's a lot of things built into each one of these categories. So in general, some things to point in, instructional and non-instructional personnel. We're looking at curricular materials, we're thinking about professional development for those given areas, and then we're thinking about other expenses that are associated with doing that business. So with that said, Dr. Core, would you mind joining me? And, um, I will just kind of walk you through this first slide. You're going to see a pattern that we've generated in the structure of our presentation. The first be, looking at, uh, instruction. And in this pattern, you will see that the first line, the first bullet highlights budget category, category variance. So we're looking at the change from one year to the next. And then we break it down a little further to see which percentage of that increase is the result of new initiatives. And so in this case, we're looking at one point six nine percent or two hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars tied to new initiatives in the air of instruction. And then two point nine four percent is looking at the budget to budget, that concept of a push-ahead budget, just to maintain what we have today, the cost of that moving forward in this case would cost two point nine four percent or just over four hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. And when we look at what that is, um, a lot of it's tied to salary increases. Uh, but one thing that really jumped out to a tune of almost fifty thousand dollars was looking at home instruction requirements for our students. So when we have students that are not able to attend school, we have an obligation to instruct them. And this year, we have seen a large increase in the number of students that have been hospitalized, students that have been injured, students that have been sick. Um, so we have to accommodate that, for that in our planning for next year. Um, so Dr. Core is going to talk us through our considerations and then I'll recap at the end of most of the categories, so.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so I'm going to walk you through, you'll notice that each slide structure is, is the same. It's, um, starts with a consideration and then a rationale. Most of, many of the considerations that we're going to walk through tonight are actually things that were discussed at the last board meeting, uh, at the last work session where the building administrators were able to talk through some of their thinking, um, and how they see their buildings moving forward. I just also want to point out that these are not in any order, in any specific order, so they're not prioritized. So first and foremost, we're going to start, thank you, Beth, is it too close? Okay. Uh, first and foremost, we're going to start with the increase of world language. So many of you know that for many years, we offered world language as part of our fifth grade program. I would say that it started in two thousand and three or two thousand and four. Um, and several years ago, we cut it as part of our cost-saving reductions in one of our budget cycles. Um, the world language program has gone through several different designs, instructionally, in different ways to, um, support and introduce our students to language in fifth grade, really providing mostly the foundation for language selection in sixth grade. Um, the language teachers, I think, would be the first to say, though, that they found that it was, um, a cultural introduction. Found that it was a, a cultural introduction and therefore, um, prepared students to make a better choice when starting sixth grade. Um, also, just as a, as a note, our students choose in sixth grade and they stay with that language for several years. So a student wouldn't pick in sixth and then change to another language in seventh or eighth grade. So what you can see here is the recommendation for world language, which would be a point four increase, um, which would be, um, open to design, but certainly, um, Principal Chapnick has a vision for how we could make this a valuable contribution for, um, global citizenship and really creating a new slant, maybe designing it differently than it was designed in the past. Um, the instru, the consideration two is the increase in math AIS staffing. So, um, Irvington traditionally has not supported math, um, academic intervention nearly at the level that we have supported literacy. Uh, for many, many years, we actually had a point eight teacher supporting both Dow's Lane and Main Street School. Over the years, we've been able to creep that number up little by little, but certainly when you compare the number of literacy specialists that we have, otherwise known as reading teachers, um, you would see that the, um, we have far fewer math specialists than do reading. We definitely are seeing, and we talked about this at the last meeting, that the need for early intervention and the value of early intervention, and therefore at, um, Dow's Lane, we now see value in supporting our students even at the kindergarten level, which we've done in literacy, but not always in mathematics. Um, putting some of our students really at a deficit when they get to first grade, not having that early intervention. The other thing, and I'll probably touch on this in a couple of different places, is, um, in K three, we have a, a focus on response to intervention. The whole premise of response to intervention is teaching students, collecting your data, making sure, knowing what they know and are able to do, and then offering an intervention based on what you see a student struggling with or a deficit area. So being able to approach that in kindergarten is certainly, would certainly be an advantage for our students. Um, let me just clarify. So the recommendation here is right now, Main Street School, who has one point five literacy, literacy specialists, um, only has a point eight math specialist supporting, uh, Main Street. So the request is for an additional point two, which would give Main Street School one point oh math support, and that would give Dow's Lane, which right now has one point two, two point oh. Um, again, right now Dow's Lane has three, uh, literacy specialists supporting reading instruction. Um, one of, you'll see Project Lead the Way sprinkled in different parts of this presentation. Um, Project Lead the Way, um, is a program that we've had at our high school level for many, many years. Um, it's a focus on engineering at the high school level. We are required to offer four courses to, um, be a high school that actually gives college credit, um, in using Project Lead the Way as course credit. And to date, we have not met that requirement. We were living under something called a provisional certification and I think they've found us. Um, but actually, we had already identified a need and an interest in expanding our program. Um, in addition, we are very interested in expanding Project Lead the Way to provide, um, instruction at both the elementary level as well as the middle school. The middle school program is called the Gateway Program and the elementary program is called Launch. And it really creates the foundation, um, for STEM instruction. It also would link directly to a conversation I feel like we've had here for several years, which is what is our technology program at the elementary level? And, um, this would be an introduction for third and fourth grade, um, in this, in, in this instruction. We are requesting an increase in expanding foundations to grade two. We've had, um, a very, very successful implementation, um, to date, it's only been It's only been a half a year, but we're definitely seeing an increase in our students' ability at the K and one level. Remember that our first graders did not have foundations at K, so we're very anxious next year to see our students who will be coming up from K and going into our first grade classrooms. But clearly, our K and one teachers have reported across the board higher levels of achievement in terms of our students' ability, knowing their letters, their ability to write. A strong part of the foundations program is handwriting. One of the things that I think we marvel at is foundations is very focused on lowercase letters, and it's funny, I think most of us grew up, you know, learning, you know, you learn your uppercase letters. And the premise behind that is that most letters that we write are lowercase. We write far fewer uppercase letters than lowercase. So there's a strong commitment to students really knowing their lowercase letters, not only uppercase. And the research clearly shows that there's value in expanding to second grade. Foundations also extends to third grade, and I know Randy, Meg, and I have had lots of conversations about whether that's a real, a viable model from Irvington. Right now, we're feeling like second grade would round out that instruction at an appropriate level for our students. The other thing that I would point out that foundations is doing for us and will continue to do is it's bringing consistency across our grade levels. So we have wonderful kindergarten and first grade teachers, and they've been doing a wonderful job, but we've lacked consistency, where not every teacher's approach was the same way. I think for many years, our kindergarten teachers had very different philosophies about kindergarten instruction. And while we honor that, we also really have a job to make sure that all our students are getting the same level of instruction. So foundations has really leveled the playing field for us, and what we're actually anxious to be able to look at is in about four or five years from now, are we going to start to see a reduction in our students who need academic intervention? Because that's really the goal behind this. It's that early intervention leading to higher levels of success for our students in the intermediate grades and above. This slide seems some, it seems a little out of, out of order here, but I can't really stress enough how infrastructure and systems make a school run and really do impact the instruction. So we thought that it was worth noting here that in surveying, we surveyed, and I got response from about 24 schools, and in terms of response of how many clerical staff they have at their high school, most have more than seven clerical staff. We have three. So if I just give, could give you just a little bit of specifics, there was one other school that had three, and they have 300 students, not, how many? 570. We had another school, all of these schools had students anywhere from 300 to about 600 in number. One school had four clerical, one school five. Four of the seven had more than seven clerical staff supporting their high school. High schools are very complex places with very, very different needs than you would find K through eight. And traditionally, we have really not had enough staff to support our work, and I think we've seen some of the effects of that, both with some of our grade reporting and some really very sensitive college-related, sensitive issues that you really need to make sure you have enough clerical staff to do the work. So we really believe that this is an essential addition to the budget for this school year. ACED, this is sometimes called, occupational educational programs. So ACED has been a program that, over the years at Irvington, we did use to offer. So some of us know that, I listed a few examples, cosmetology, culinary arts, auto body and detailing. These are programs that are offered through BOSIs, both Southern BOSIs as well as Northern BOSIs. So there are two different categories of students who might attend a program like that. So you might have a student with an IEP who is going to a program like that, but we're not necessarily talking about only classified students. We have students whose parents and families really feel, and students who feel that this is a very viable path for them in their life, and we have a responsibility to be offering those opportunities. Irvington demographics traditionally has not produced a lot of students who want to pursue this, but we do have some, and we've certainly seen some requests coming forward this year for students who are interested in pursuing this. Most students pursuing an ACED path would spend part of the day here in Irvington in their courses, and then take, or provide a transportation to a BOSIs program where they've complete the remaining part of their day. So this is again, something that really needs to be part of our program in Irvington. Not large numbers, but certainly there are a small pool of students who are pursuing this and have made this request. Increase in English as a second language. So this is also an area that has grown, and we still only have 1.5 staff members right now in the district. We went from, I want to say, at one point, I think we had .5 K-12. I would say Scott has been relentless in reminding us that we have requirements that need to be met, certain number of minutes depending on a student's proficiency. As a result of, I think Scott really constantly pushing us to say, here's what we need, here's what we need, we have increased this over time. We have 1.5 staff members, 1.0 is four through 12 right now, and we have a .5 staff member at Dow's Lane. As a result of new regulations, we are going to be required to provide more instruction to our, which are now being called ENL, so some of you might know the expression ESL, some of you might know ELL, Ls, sometimes you'll hear these students called. But we now have a new name, and that would be ENL. So English is a new language. English, yeah, as a new language.
Is that a different thing, or just a new name?
It's all new, it's a new name. It's a new name. New name, new name and more minutes. So, so honestly, in order for us to meet the expectations and standards, this is a request in the budget. This is just a general consideration eight across the district. We have areas where we need office and classroom furniture, and so this also falls into, under this instructional budget.
So I would like to introduce you to a new budget chart that was developed in collaboration with board leadership. And in looking at this chart, we're trying to provide a lot more information than we did in previous presentations of this nature. But one little bit of a miss from this process, maybe for some people, is that we are not, we did not start off the budget process with a push-ahead budget. So we just, a budget where we took a look at what we had today and what would it cost to maintain it tomorrow. So this chart makes an effort to communicate that information. So if you start on the left, you see the budget categories, places where there are new employees being introduced, full-time equivalent, FTE, and we identify those folks, and you can track those numbers all the way back to the previous slides that Dr. Core spoke of. And then when we look at our approved budget, this is what was approved last year, and then the push-ahead. So what would it cost to maintain the services that we have in those respective areas today? So we're looking at that change and then the percent variance. And then when you see the double line in the center, we are looking at the new budget considerations that were just discussed. We're then looking at what those numbers look combined, so the proposed budget, which is inclusive of the push-ahead, and the new considerations, and then that is reflected in the change and percent variance by line, and then ultimately at the bottom by category. So this is a bit cumbersome, but I think it's very informative if you were to step back and take some time to look at this. But that concludes the component with respect to instruction, Mr. Whitney.
So I think now we can take our questions about instruction and revisit the eight considerations and talk about anything else. You know, I think it would be helpful to get questions out of the way and then maybe express preference, once the questions are answered, you know, just give, to give Dr. Harrison, Ms. Miller, an idea of what we can see, what we consider to be the preference of the board. So why don't we do questions first to kind of get into the details here? I have some. Anybody else? Shall I go?
Go ahead.
On budget consideration number two, where we have a total staff addition of, I think, 2.0, the total salary was $68,000, does that mean that we're only paying these people $34,000? Or is it?
68 does not include benefits.
Slide two, slide.
Oh, one, oh, well, it says 1.0 Dow's Lane, .8 in Main Street, or is that the breakdown?
Yes, the breakdown.
Oh, that's the breakdown, so it's 1.0 for six, for 68, right? The, and then the estimated benefits are 40%?
Correct, approximately, yeah.
Seems very high.
Well, I used the actual retirement pension plan numbers, and I used estimated health insurance naturally, because you don't know who you'd be hiring, and I used actual federal and FICA, as well as health, or life insurance, disability, et cetera.
Yeah, I just didn't realize it's 40%.
And, and since you're, you're budgeting for hiring a new, new teacher, at what step? Sorry to jump in, but this is related to your question, I think.
Yeah. I used MA step two, I think, as the average.
Okay. So the cost of this position will grow over time as that person who gets hired, so this is actually understates the ultimate cost of this position.
The objective was to estimate what the cost would be for the.
For the current budget, understood, understood, but it'll grow.
Always does.
Well.
And then on consideration number four, I was just curious, on the professional development, the $10,000, to whom or to what entity is that paid?
To foundations, so you, yeah, you're required when you implement. One of the ways that they, I think, maintain or hold to the fidelity of the program is is they require professional development as part of your implementation to ensure that it is implemented across with fidelity, so.
Is that how they make their money, then?
Well, no, I think it's how they ensure that as a school district, we don't just buy the program, and then teachers are reading through the materials and figuring out how to implement it. It's a very structured program, it requires training in how to do it. One thing that they've offered, not, as part of this, is not only do they train our teachers in doing it, but they're in our classrooms, they're watching the teachers teach it, and then giving the teachers feedback. So I think ultimately, it's an investment that will have this program running more consistently across all grade levels.
So go, I'm sorry, going forward, K1, what's our financial obligation next year?
The only, just materials.
Just the materials. The materials are every year, because that's like a workbook type?
There are mater, there are, I can tell you how much that would be, the materials are, there are certain consumables, so when you buy your package, you buy, you get that. So for instance, at grade one, our consumable costs this year will be 1,848. At K, our consumable costs will be 1,232. So those are, those are pretty standard costs for any program in terms of consumables. So that's the ongoing cost. I, the one nice thing that we'll have, should we be able to expand the grade two program and have this professional development, is we would expect that they would also be working with K and one, even in year two, to make sure that we're shored up nicely at those grade levels, because the person would be in the building. So we certainly would take advantage of that moving forward for K and one next year, too.
Are there, like, like, does the person come to the building, but do they hold seminars or info sessions? Because I'm wondering if it would make sense for like, the bridge teachers, like, for the three teachers, the K3, I mean, the third grade teachers and the second grade teachers and the first grade teachers to all kind of maybe tap into some of that, so that they know what to expect for the rising kids and for the kids going into second grade.
So we've already organized that now. So we have the second grade teachers who are, whether we move, whether they're able to move forward with this or not, we have the second grade teachers, Randy and Meg have made a plan for them to be going into classrooms, to be seeing this instruction, as well as the day ends with the K and one teachers together, so that K and one teachers, that's that articulation piece, are saying, here's what we're seeing, here's what we're seeing. So, yeah, it's, it's been a very well-rounded implementation, and I would anticipate that moving forward, too.
And just a question on number five, budget consideration number five, the clerical staff. Again, the estimated benefits there appear to be 75% of the salary?
I'm sorry, which one?
Number five.
$30,000 over $40,000?
That's like 14%.
Yep, I just calculated what it would be. You know, it's a different employee's retirement system versus.
Right.
How could that be?
Retirement system.
Yeah.
I don't understand how that could be, though.
Could you just double check?
Maybe, maybe, could we just ask her to give us just the breakdown of that?
Sure, yeah, the breakdown.
I can tell you.
Categories, maybe.
But so, all clerical people, their, the benefits is 75% of?
I know, this is a bag. I came with everything.
Yeah, the big budget binder. I have one of those.
Here it is. Looks like a weapon. Yeah, no, really. All right, clerical. FICA, $3,060. ERS, $7,009,12. $20,000 for health insurance, I was estimating two-person. $70 for life insurance, $1,000 for the union welfare benefits. That total fringe comes to about $32,000, and then, which would then bring the entire position up to about 72. And I always take a little bit off because of maybe some leaves and absences throughout the year. So I rounded it down to the 69,460.
So, so health insurance is two-thirds of this number?
Right.
So basically.
Because it's, it would be 20, I estimated the two-person health insurance for all.
Yeah.
So if you've got a $40,000, $40,000 position or a $100,000 position, it's still the $20,000.
It's the same healthcare, so they're, we're paying the same amount, no matter how much we're paying the person.
So essentially, then, the average for a clerical, it's a very high load factor. And I would assume the teacher are going to see probably closer to 30%. And a clerical, now, it seems.
Closer to about 40.
40 now, but he said it was 40.
It may be 30 if you've got a teacher at the top of the level.
So the, the things that are, go up in lockstep would, well, ERS would, is a function of salary, right?
Correct.
But not healthcare.
Right.
And FICA, up to a point, is lockstep, but then for very highly-paid people.
And the union welfare benefit is locked at 1,000 for individuals.
Okay, but healthcare is the big thing that's.
Yeah.
Right.
I didn't realize it was $20,000.
Right.
It's a known fact of American life.
And on budget consideration six, would the $31,000, is that for staff or just a fee to?
Tuition for two students.
It's tuition, and that gets paid, paid to BOSIs, or?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And that, does that include the busing, transportation?
We believe that we're able to wrap that into our current transportation arrangement, where we already have students that may special education and the like.
I see, and so, yeah, because the other question is, how many students would be participating? This is for two, two students.
But it is aidable, just to point out it is BOSIs.
Two students, we said it's two students.
Two, yeah. So is this net of that aid, or no?
No, because any aid would have to be shown on the revenue side, and also BOSIs aid, a lot of it is one year behind.
Right, but I guess it just helps us understand what the ultimate tax, budgetary and tax impact is, if we can know with that, how much we're likely, even if it's with a year lag, how much we're likely to get back.
Yep.
Yeah, this year, John, it would be the, the full cost you see before you. Next year, our eight, BOSIs aid figure would play into that, and it would be ballpark of.
Maybe 50%.
50% of that, we would then receive a BOSIs aid. So if we were to move forward with two students continuing in the program next year, you'd be looking at approximately half that cost because of the BOSIs revenue.
Yeah, okay, but, you know, in, in some sense, you know, just basically, you can think of it as borrowing from ourselves half of that money for a year, and then we get paid back the money. The district, we don't actually have to raise taxes by the full amount, we just draw down reserves by that 15,000, 16,000, whatever it is. And then when we get the aid back, we put it back in reserves. You know, I think this thing seems, is probably cheaper than it looks, that's my point, less expensive than it looks. And, you know, we should keep that in mind, you know, there is a timing issue.
It's a net 15, basically.
Yeah.
Is, is that money, what I can't get a sense of, is that money one-time-use things? That, or are some, is some of what you're spending that money on will be able to, you know, depreciate over time, use it over ti, over multiple years?
This is tuition.
Oh, that's tuition.
It's tuition.
Oh, I thought you were creating stuff, okay.
It's tuition.
Okay.
And they're going, sorry, they're going to where? They're going to Westchester Community?
Southern Westchester.
Southern Westchester BOCs.
Southern Westchester BOCs, okay.
That's it for my questions at the moment. By the way, for those of you who may not understand the full context of this, we heard from our building principals on February third, a week ago, they went through, a meeting that John sadly missed, they went through in some detail their, their requests. They didn't go into the numbers, they just discussed what they wanted to do going forward based on what was working in their buildings this year. And it was a meeting that we had planned quite some time ago to get their feedback on, in a general way, on what they wanted to do in fifteen, sixteen. So, these numbers really are coming from the programs that they, that they discussed. And then, maybe you watched it on video, right?
It hasn't, wasn't up last, I checked, not that I had time, but, yeah, but so. I'm, I'm, I'm still waiting, I did read the minute, the draft minutes, they were.
Okay.
I saw it yesterday, so it is up.
I didn't, I was, yeah, yesterday I couldn't have the opportunity, it was over the weekend.
Yeah.
So, I had to watch something else this weekend.
Questions, additional questions?
Are we just going down the line?
Sure, yeah, Maria?
Uh, consideration number one, the world language addition, will we see this newly designed plan prior to adopting this budget?
Good question.
I would say we could share a framework of a plan. I, I guess, I guess, maybe I can ask a couple of questions. So, if the question is, like, some of the basics, are we still talking about doing French and Spanish? Like, if, if that's what you mean. So, I think that we can develop, but, I mean, the real curriculum development would have to be done, you know, once we, because somebody's gonna have to do the curriculum development around it.
Right.
So, I guess I want to say yes, but I, but I want to say that with some hesitancy, that we certainly could develop goals, and we could develop an approach that we could share. But I guess I would certainly wouldn't want to have somebody developing a curriculum that we were, we'd have to pay someone to do that. A teacher to work with us to do that, so.
Well, I, I guess I just want to, again, just stress what Robin had said at the last meeting, the concerns. I mean, I, I think, I mean, I would love to add this, this is a great ask in my mind, but there are a lot of concerns, given the history here. It's the same department, same teachers, you know, I, I understand new principal, new administration. But I think, I, I, I mean, at least for me, I need to see a little bit more, I, I guess, a framework to know that we're investing, you know, properly here.
And, and I totally understand, and we can definitely do that. The one thing I would just like to maybe say is, I would think what's going to make it different this time is that the initial design will be at the beginning of it, so you.
I'm sorry, will be what?
Will be from the start. In other words, we'll be designing this, so when world language was originally put in at fifth grade, it was put in with a very, very different approach. And it wasn't really a well-thought-out plan in terms of how it was gonna work out. The idea was it was gonna go down in grade levels, there were a lot of pieces to it. There's also a staffing component here, so I would just say that, you know, we have a, one of our Spanish teachers is retiring, so there are some other staffing moves that will happen. So, I guess I just want to highlight that also as part of this, that right now, we are not even sure what staffing would look like for this. So, I just throw that as part of this conversation. But I, I totally understand, and I think Joyce and I would be more than happy to share a framework with you of where we think that this could go and how it would support the development of language moving forward.
I think I'd like to second that, that's kind of an important.
Yeah.
Piece to getting the yes on this.
Sure.
Right?
All, all aspects of it, I mean.
That covers.
All right, just, because we're on the world language, one question about the, you mentioned the curriculum development piece that will obviously have to happen, and the cost associated with that, is that, that cost clearly is not embedded in this expense, that's just the instructional. Is that cost in your budget under professional development? So, it's covered in there, it's not in addition to that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Then on consideration number two. How, I guess I have a question about how you envision AIS working. Is it gonna be organic by unit? Like, some kids might be in AIS for one unit and not in another, or is it, once a kid is tagged, then they're in it? And, no, so it is.
Desperately trying to move from that model.
Okay, that's good.
So, similar to, to, to what goes on with reading?
Yes, so we are looking to move our model of response to intervention, which, again, I keep saying that because I, that means that you are responding, you're, you're watch, you're observing, you're assessing how a student is doing, and you are intervening as you see needed through this process. One of the problems we have right now is, especially in fourth and fifth grade, by the time our students get to fourth and fifth grade, they become, they've been put into academic intervention, because the early intervention pieces have not been there at a, at a significant enough level. Our goal, I would say, K through five, is to be much more responsive, especially in mathematics, to be looking at units, certain units would require certain interventions, we see different needs with different kids. The other thing that it would provide for both Main Street School and Dows Lane is enough staffing to be more flexible. Right now, we sometimes have been putting our students into these slots, because our slots are so rigid that this is when the teacher is there, the teacher's only there on Tuesdays from ten to twelve. And so, we have to put that student in. So, the other thing that we see this providing both at Dows Lane and Main Street is a much higher level of flexibility, so that we are really meeting students' needs and not just building a schedule.
In concert with looking, with adding AIS, which, which, you know, seems like we definitely need it, to me, but I also wonder if we also look at it together with the instruction and how the instructions delivered, because if you're seeing spikes in a year, or, you know, across a grid, or with a teacher, I mean, I, I, it seems like they're related, and you can't look at one without the other. So, are we also looking kind of broadly at the forest and saying, are there other things that we can do to shore up their learning in the classroom?
Yes, so, especially around mathematics, which is why this is really the perfect time. Across the grade levels, K through five, at the end, we actually have mid-module assessments and end-of-module assessments, so there's a lot of monitoring. But one of the, one of the significant factors that we're seeing K through five is, we need to ensure that our teachers have what are called tier-one interventions. So, response to intervention is really a three-tiered system. Tier-one interventions are what a teacher should do in the classroom when they identify a student is struggling and needs some support. Once we see that those, that level of support is not making a significant enough difference, that's when you go to tier-two, and that's when your interventionists start to come in. When you get to tier-three, that's where we start to look and reflect to say, maybe it's actually more than that, and maybe that, where we might suggest some testing, or, so it's really a model that should grow with the need of a student. We would like to see that most of our students are getting their needs addressed through tier-one interventions, which is teacher intervention. So, yes, through the work with Christine Rosner and the work she leads, she works with every grade level, looking at their data, looking at the kinds of questions our kids are struggling with, and then intervening in redesigning the modules and the curriculum to address what the need is.
Okay. And I, and I know I said it last week, but John wasn't there, and some other people weren't, but I'm, I'm still hearing from parents, and I know you, we talked about this, but, just for the record, that, you know, the, the missing link of having someone like a Christine Rosner addressing the higher achieving kids is, is still being felt by some of the students and the parents. So, I just throw that out there, too, I don't see it in the ask, but it's something that, you know, comes up, it's been coming up for a few years now, so that would be of interest to me as a board member, as we look ahead.
And I guess the only thing I would say is, I truly encourage, I don't know where the cameras these days, I truly encourage any parent who is having that concern, they should be contacting Randy and Joyce, because I know they've spoken to parents, and I think some of it is just not understanding where that enrichment is coming from. So, I really would, if you're hearing it from parents, and if your parents out there, please contact the building principals, because they really would be more than happy to make sure a parent understands and knows what is going on to support our higher achieving students in the classroom.
What are parents being told? Maybe, what do you tell parents?
Well, I think that.
I mean, that's, that's what, kind of, it's been asked. Could Randy and Joyce speak to that, maybe?
Sure. Joyce, I know Joyce has got the parent.
Sure, the microphone, please.
So, you, you can, you can come back to us if it's not, if you want to think about it, but.
So, John, I talked about this a little bit last week, when we went around as principals and chaired. So, for me, my response to, I've met with one parent, actually, who came in, and it was a result of a PTSA, I guess, executive board meeting, where it came up as a topic. And they were encouraged also, like, just encouraged, to come in and see the principal. So, I did, I met with a parent. And my response to her was, but first, I asked questions, you know, have you seen this with your child? What's been going on? And her child is actually a higher master, and she felt like her child was being challenged in the classroom, felt like that, she just wanted to know what was going on with the math curriculum, how were kids who were excelling, were, were their needs being met, and how? She had no issues with her own child, she just wanted to know.
That's it.
And so, the response is that the way we, we shifted to the math modules last year, and so, this is the second year that we're using the Engage New York modules. And the way that they're set up is that there are problem sets, and there are entry points for all different levels of students. And so, teachers find those entry points for kids, and that's how they work with the kids. So, right now, at Main Street School, we've been doing a lot of work, last year was the first year they were doing it. So, teachers really stuck to the script of the modules, trying to really understand what the new language was, and making those things of the alignment of the core. And I think this year, now that they're in year two, and with Christine Rosner as the math coach, like, tremendous support from Christine, she's supporting the teachers in sort of shifting that more scripted approach of the math modules to one where students are able to work in groups and in stations, where then teachers can support them at the level where they are, so that entry point that they need. So, there is, there are so many problems within each math lesson, problems meaning numbers that students can work on, that teachers are able to support kids where they are and push them where they can go. Whereas in the past, that might not, might not have been the case in terms of the level and sophistication of the problems that kids were being given.
So, so that, what's changed is the, well, the instructional material?
Yeah, the instructional material's changed, and our approach has changed. I would say that Christine has really supported the teachers in unpacking the language of the modules and the way in which we teach math. So, there, there are strategies that they use, whether it's tape diagramming, there's a lot of, of drawing methods, there's a lot of methodology that shifted for our teachers in terms of their instructional practice that's supporting kids at all levels.
Could I, maybe just, in the interest of time, rather than hearing from Randy right now, maybe we should just move on and continue our questions, thank you, Randy, didn't mean to, to take the words out of your mouth. Yep, Joyce said it so well. I think, you know, we've noted it, and I think it's something that we can continue to talk about, because we'll have plenty of time in future meetings as well.
Um, okay, a few more questions, Project Lead the Way, couple of questions. The money that's in here, is that for all of the pieces of it that you're gonna roll out? It's not, you didn't break out the high school, the launch program, the gateway, that's all lumped in there?
Yes, I can give you the, I can give you that, I have it all broken down, so we certainly can just give you the chart, and this way you would be able to see, sure.
Yes. And one of the things that, we're not gonna go into that much detail, but one of the things we talked about in the curriculum meeting was the pieces, but I don't think most people know that. So, if you could give us the breakdown, then maybe we could, you know, over time, we can kind of have a bigger discussion with the pieces and where we're at.
I have it by grade, so that you can see.
Right. So, here, I think here is a good time when, because looking at the high school, I, I think the high school's a piece of that, given what the requirements are. And I, I guess, to me, I'm thinking, this is, this is the full ask. So, in terms of high school, for adding courses, it's all gonna be Project Lead the Way? Or are they gonna be, are you adding other courses, too, but there's not a cost associated with it?
Absolutely, so I know, you know, Dave, Deb and I have met, and we've met with chairs, we're looking at several different areas, certainly electives, different electives in English has been a serious focus for us, but it would not, there'd be course development relate, related costs, but nothing that would have fallen into a high level of ask that you would have seen here.
And what about a computer programming, or an app develop, is there a specific computer class that we're adding, just because people ask us all the time?
Yeah, the AP, so we had shared, I think, somewhere, maybe it was in the curriculum meeting, actually, yes, so the AP, computer science.
Yeah, and it was brought up last week as well.
Yes, okay, so the cost associated with that would be the professional learning development fund, which sends our teachers to the AP course that they have to take in order to teach the course.
Is it possible, for the purposes of budget planning, for us to get a sense, as, because I know we also, in the meeting last week, we talked about other things that they were adding, but I actually don't see budget associated with it, so I'm not sure if they're getting added or not. Like, I guess in the middle school, we talked about adding some clubs, but I don't see an ask.
It's another budget.
Oh, okay, sorry.
But I think your point about the high school computer sciences, because it, it doesn't show up here.
Right, but I think it would be interesting to know, because if it's, if, if we as a board are gonna say, well, we'd like to see something, it's, it's, I'd rather not ask the question if we know what's being offered, or you guys are developing it anyway.
Right, I remember Dave saying last week, because I think I asked, the computer sci, the, the courses that you're contemplating don't have cost attached to it, which puzzled me last week, so, because everything we do costs money, you add a section, it costs money. So, how is it that it doesn't cost us money?
Because, so, you're saying.
Here, if we're not, aren't we adding a section?
We're adding a section, but taking other things away.
I see.
Right, so I think what our plan is, and you know, I, I know that Dave, and maybe, it's, I know we're gonna have building-level presentations a little later in the spring, probably a very helpful thing for Dave and Deb to share is their conceptual development of how we offer courses in Irvington every other year. So, we're offering something, we're, same thing with PLTW, you take it in this semester and not in the next semester, or in the first year, and then not in the second year. Being such a small school, we can't offer everything every year, we don't even have the, the number of students that you would need to do that. So, Dave and Deb have really been working to develop this more of a sequence, with a sequence approach. And what that does is, A, it's, it's a cost factor, because we're not really adding another section, and then, once we develop the course, then it just becomes a rotation. If I'm a student coming in ninth grade, tenth grade, I'm really beginning to see, make a plan for myself that in year two, I'm gonna do this, in year three, I might do that.
I see.
So, when, I, I just, I guess it's more of an operational thing, but, you know, for students who are going to be selecting their courses for next year, when is kind of details gonna come out for the, like, for high school students, when are they kind of gonna know, okay, here's a new course catalog for next year, and here's, and just timing-wise, and when are they, you know?
When we're pulling this information together, we can insert all that into there, if you'd like.
Okay, okay. One other question about, in terms of Project Lead the Way, and it's, I guess, from a professional development perspective, and looking at Common Core, specifically in math, I guess, because these are really more, well, stem in math and science, but, are we still looking at significant professional development for Common Core development with the same teachers, and how do you view that playing into their time?
So, the, I'll say, the beauty part of rolling out Project Lead the Way, in the way that Randy, Meg, Joyce, and I have envisioned it, is that in the first year, it would become part of the technology program. So, Gwen Carney would be responsible for, in the instruction for grades three and four of the four units at each grade level. The, and when you see my chart, you'll actually see how it's related to science. The goal would be to build Gwen's knowledge and understanding, and over time, to insert more PLTW units at the other grade levels, the science part of it will actually, could become part of the teacher's science curriculum. So, we would imagine that this would be a way, and they're next-generation science standard aligned. So, as we're rolling out the next-generation science standards, Gwen will almost be, will have almost a built-in in-house coach in rolling out these science units as part of our K-five curriculum. So, we really see this as a three-to-four-year plan for embedding Project Lead the Way units, and as well as building on our science curriculum, which is gonna need work based on the new standards, so.
Then, I guess, I think it would be really useful to look at that from a budgeting perspective, too. I mean, if you think of rolling it out over three to four years, is it possible for us to see that three-to-four-year budget rolled out in front, too?
Sure.
And that would be helpful. And then, just a specific question, on the, on the iPads. Can you talk a little bit about? Can you talk a little bit about, you know, what that's for and where that goes?
So, in order to implement the third and fourth grade units, you have to have iPads. They're a part and parcel of the design of the program. So, what you're seeing there is it would be half, it would be half a, eight thousand really would be at Dow's Lane, eight thousand worth of iPads, about fourteen iPads and four-
How much?
Fourteen iPads.
Fourteen for a grade?
And fourteen iPads at Main Street School.
I thought you needed one iPad per four students.
But they, that's their, that's their recommendation, but in speaking to the woman, she said that is, four is not a great number. That's not a great ratio. And I would say from instructional design, it is very rare that I see four students working in a group that I think that you would lose a student who's not as engaged, because they're not really in the work, because they're stepping back. So, when we looked at this, we really felt for a stronger implementation, that it would make much more sense to have two to one.
Two to one.
So, one, two students sharing one iPad.
One class, twenty-eight students.
So, well, you need a teacher iPad, we need to be put, built in a couple iPads, not working, students are there. I mean, she would be using these every single day, you know, so she would really need to make sure that she has the technology.
What's the average cost of an iPad? What'd you estimate? I'm just curious, like forty plus or something?
Class is what, the largest is about twenty-five, twenty-four kids in a class, right?
Twenty-four, twenty-five is the largest?
Probably a desk.
So, you're just saying per class?
Right, she's teaching one class at a time.
Yeah, so just each class that comes to her, they don't need it for the whole grade.
Correct, one class at a time, correct.
Okay, okay. Oh, and foundations?
The answer is five hundred and seventy.
What?
Five seventy.
Five seventies, the average cost, okay.
Per iPad.
Okay, thanks.
But that's not the actual, I just want to be careful, that's not the actual cost of the iPad. So, you need to have charging stations. We're going to need to have, make sure that we have Wi-Fi. So, I'm not sure that actually, I'm, I'm going to say it's the charging station, that's really what's the other matter. So, the iPad itself doesn't cost five seventy, it's the iPad cart. So, you have to include the cost of storing those iPads, charging those iPads. So, it's not an individual iPad. So, that's why I'm saying it's about eight thousand per building to have the iPad and the iPad cart.
But then the following year, if you roll out to the classroom, then you're going to have to look at that number, which will increase, because every classroom will need them as opposed to one technology teacher.
Yes, but there's always creative scheduling, so it might also be that the fourth grade, while Gwen is at Dow's Lane, is when maybe the fourth grade teachers are using those iPads.
Okay, so we'll think that through a little from the numbers perspective?
Sure.
With, with foundations, just a question about, you mentioned that with K to one, we're seeing a really great increase in terms of the abilities of the kids. I guess as a board, we always ask if, you know, we'd like to see that data, like, I think that's great. I'm just curious as to how, what you're seeing and how you're measuring it.
Sure.
You know, with the high school clerical staff, I, I guess the number just those may, and I guess my question is, you know, maybe there's a creative way to look at delivering some of those duties without having to pay a load factor of such a high number. I don't know if there's an answer to that, but it's just a really high load factor that obviously, you know, doesn't, doesn't help the district, it's just the way we're set up now and the way the contracts are. But it's very high.
Robin, I mean, I think we were shocked to get the, I mean, I, I have and I'm happy to share this data of where, how many schools have more than seven people. We have three, I mean, I'm just saying.
I'm not, I, again, I didn't say, I understand that there's a need there, but, you know.
I guess I just would like to highlight, and maybe we could talk about this moving forward, is what is the cost of not having the infrastructure to support your high school and your students? And what is the work that Dave and Deb are doing as a result of not having clerical staff? So, I guess I just, you know, the rationale there is, and I, and I know what you're saying, so I'm not, I'm not real, I'm not debating it with you, but I guess I'm being passionate about it, because when I hear that there are schools with, you know, three hundred kids who have three clerical staff, or a, a school with five hundred and four kids who have seven, five hundred and, you know, thirty kids who have four, it's just, it, I was shocked actually. It never occurred to me that we were at such a deficit.
Maybe you could send that information around to the board, so we, yeah.
And you'll see it by district. I'd ask you to keep that, you know, because we collect that data in a private way. But, yeah, I'd be happy to share that data.
That'd be great.
And I guess it gets back to another ask that we had, just we talked, last time we talked about a lot of consultants and hoping we could see the data of what consultants we have in the district and what they're providing. Consultants are looking better, no load factor. And that one we've covered and...
Can I ask one question while you're looking?
Oh, one other thing is, I'm sorry, one other thing, then, on the consideration number eight with the office and classroom furniture, I guess just would like to see a percentage allocation between the schools.
I find this odd, isn't this somewhere that usually is in like Gary's budgets? Like, doesn't he always allot for X amount of replacement of furniture and stuff over the year?
Not instructional furniture.
Not instructional?
No, under Gary's budget would be-
A lunchroom and things like that.
Well, it could be lunchroom, but it's usually the, I call them the Zambonis, the, the, yeah.
Floor scrubbers.
The floor scrubbers, the burnishers, and the lawn mowers.
You're showing your northern roots.
The last question, I'm, I'm thinking maybe it's just something you can pull together, a sentence or two, and not go through it now, just in the interest of time, but with this chart that you put up there of proposed instruction by the district, and you did the approved budget versus the push ahead budget, there are clearly some categories would jump out, because there's a, a big change. And instead of going through line item by line item, I'm wondering if there's a way that you could kind of pull out anything that's significant. For example-
Robin, just for clarity, are you thinking-
Equipment, or, yeah.
So, when we're looking at the proposed budget, the jump?
The differential between the approved and proposed, when it's a significant differential, an explanation would be helpful. And it's probably stuff we've talked about in here, but it's hard to tell that when going through this.
So, the equipment, because that's a-
Right, or like-
That's the wrong way. So, you'd want to know other expense instruction, right? Because that's fifty thousand.
Well, the equipment, we put all of basically the new requests under new considerations. And the only thing that remains in the push ahead would be some replacement furniture, which we absolutely need, you know, and some required teacher's desk, filing cabinets, and things like that. So, everything that is not-
So, why did equipment go down?
Pardon?
Why did equipment go down, thirty-six thousand dollars?
That's what I just said, because everything that the teacher or the principals ask for every year is a new consideration. So, the only thing that we left under push ahead budget would be some replacement furniture for broken student desks, chairs, teachers' desks.
Emergency type.
Emergency type.
But where are you putting, it's hard to compare budget to budget if you change categories. So, where are those now, how much is, where are those things being allocated? They're under, they're under the new budget considerations for twenty-seven thousand.
So, so for that, for that, the push ahead's a little bit of a different kind of idea.
If you look at these items here, where I'm trying to use the arrow, Jesse, you can track these figures, almost all of them, right back to the slides that precede it.
Okay.
The slides that were what, sorry?
That precede these, the considerations.
Oh, you mean the, well, we can track the new budget considerations.
Yes.
I think she's, but she, I think a better example might be instruction, right, four hundred, Bev? Code four hundred, because that's going up by fifty thousand dollars and it's not a new consideration.
That was first addressed in Dr. Harrison's presentation when he said the homebound instruction.
Oh, that's the homebound instruction.
Significantly.
Yeah, again, I, I guess I asked the same thing, even though if we sat, if I sat here, I could probably figure this out, but it would be easier on the big ones if you could just bullet point it for us and say, okay, that's homebound instruction, that's that, then I, then it's just easier.
But what other, because all the other ones are contractual, right?
Is that anything else that I, okay?
Right?
And it must also be that certain things are going, are decreasing. I mean, these are, these push aheads, these changes are net, right? Some things will go up a lot.
Right, some go up.
I mean, homebound instruction, I don't know, but could be going up a lot more and then something else is shrinking and-
Right, and then the other, the last comment I'll make, which I always kind of, I really don't love looking at the approved budget number, because we're now in February and we have a much better idea of actuals plus the remaining part of the year. So, if there's any categories where the actuals are significantly off from the budget, I would like to give us a heads up on that as well, just as you're going through it. Like, if we're comparing the approved to the push ahead, but in reality, the actual was either significantly lower or higher than the approved, it would just be good information to have for budget.
So, the home, using the home instruction as the example, right?
Yes, yes, because I'm assuming the actual went way up, right, but it's hard to see on here. So, I mean, we always said, can you do, I don't want to make more work for you, but the actual is much more relevant to me than the approved budget at this point in time.
And then that actual is projected.
Actual plus the estimated to the end of the year. Well, but it's, but you have, like you said, you have, you know, things like legal costs. We've always been able to get a much better handle on where we're going to be this year when you look at where we are today plus the rest of the year.
John?
The, yeah, I have just, because a lot's been asked, I've just kind of scattered, they'll seem random there. That's because they are. The, the, all of the budget categories that Robin was just talking about, that doesn't include the ones that involve personnel, which I guess are teacher salaries, instructional salaries. That, benefits don't show up in here, right? So, pension costs, for example.
Presented at the next, um, first.
Okay, because that's also obviously an important.
So, we illustrated it there as a matter of example, but it will be reflected in the next budget presentation.
Okay. But in some cases, the new budget considerations do involve those benefits, right? Are they not in these numbers? Because you had the benefit cost for the, for the clerical staff in the high school, for example.
The state requires different coding, so we always present the fringe benefits separately. But as a matter of conversation tonight, we did include the fringe benefits for each one of those line items to assist you.
Yeah, because you asked for that last year, the year before, I remember. You asked, can we see the whole thing?
Well, that's great, yeah.
But that'll appear, in terms of these charts, that'll appear, those.
Overall, you will, you will see all of the benefits.
Okay, okay.
On March third.
And then we, you know, when we come, talking about preferences and stuff, we can have a conversation about, you know, what sort of budget, overall budget increase and tax increase all this might lead to and where we're comfortable, okay. So, we, we can leave that, I can leave that. I think there was an, one of you alluded to there being a requirement that we're satisfying in the high school regarding Project Lead the Way, and I didn't understand what the requirement were, was versus what is kind of a, a choice that we're making.
So, when we first launched Project Lead the Way, seven or eight years ago, we made a commitment in bringing that product in and that we're giving students college credit, that we would ultimately run four courses related. So, what they're really encouraging us to do was, is a sequence. So, that's really what they're asking for. So, it's three plus a capstone or two with the others. So, it's between, if you do-
That was always the case from the very beginning?
Yes, well, I, I mean, it was seven years ago, so I'd have to actually go and dig that out, but, you know, at this point, that is their requirement.
That's the requirement now.
Wait, I'm sorry, still don't exactly understand, whose requirement to do, what are we, what are we being required to do by who?
In order to give students college credit. So, we're affiliated, so Project Lead the Way is-
What does college credit mean in this circumstance?
The same way that we give students, students who take AP courses or we offer Supa. Our students graduate with their college, with an intro to engineering course.
Which, do we have any sense of how many colleges really accept that and as a credit? I mean, in some cases, being neck deep in, in college admissions these days, I mean, a lot of schools will look at AP for, at least, you know, some of the more competitive colleges will look at AP for placement, but not really for credit toward graduation and-
I can, I, I can't say that I can speak to the data, but I can, I can recall a conversation that I had with a parent recently, a child is interested in pursuing engineering. And when he went for his interviews and met with a chairperson in engineering department, and I want to say it was knee-high, but I'm not certain. But they spoke of how impressed he was, they were with his background and said that based upon his education here in the Project Lead the Way program, that he was not going to have to take some of the introductory courses that were required in that particular program. So, anecdotal, not quantified.
Yeah, okay, okay. So, just to kind of come back and just try to sort this out a little bit better, where the requirement is in order to get to the, that college, AP equivalent college credit level, whatever that is.
And it's a sequence of courses.
A sequence of courses.
John, I don't mean to interrupt, but just to be mindful of time, because you missed the last meeting where we did talk about it, and I'm just wondering if it might, if you have a whole lot of questions about Project Lead the Way, maybe it would make sense to take it offline?
I don't have a whole lot of questions about Project Lead the Way.
Thank you.
One question, I'm repeating, just to understand it better. Okay. On the, on the professional development for foundations and in consideration for ten thousand, why, isn't, aren't we dropping, aren't we already paying for professional development for the K and one level foundations that's being dropped out of the budget for the coming year?
Yes, so, yes, so when we did our proposal for this year, that money was in there for that, so that's true. In other words, we're, it's not really new. It's new because we wanted to show you the cost-
Yeah, fair, fair enough.
But there's a saving.
Fair enough, yeah, yeah.
But I, yes, but that would be accurate.
But it would, that ten thousand would be reflected, the reduction of ten thousand, although it's not a large number, it's ref- no, ten.
Ten.
Well, is it ten or twenty, or I don't know?
Ten for two grades, no?
Or is it?
No, no, it was ten, they provided, they have a standard-
Oh, it's K one?
It's K one.
So, if we did K two, K two last year would have been ten thousand all three?
Yes, but just keep in mind that our teachers would have had, I'm just saying, our teachers would have had less time with the consultant, with, you know, professional learning opportunities. So, yes, so it's a, in that way-
Right, right, but so in terms of our tables, you're taking the ten thousand out in the push ahead and then you're putting it back in the proposal, I guess, right?
Right, yeah, because it went down.
But it's-
Forty-five to thirty-nine, so.
So, all right, in some sense, we're maintaining that.
Yes.
But in some sense, we're not, okay, just wanted to clarify. Can you, we've done this before, but can you remind me, do you have any, off the top of your head, sense of the numbers of, of, of our students who benefit from the ENL program, if I'm using the current term?
I'm looking at Gail and Scott.
Yeah, let's not look.
Yeah, total, total ENLers. At any given, in any given year, it rotates.
K twelve, were you talking?
Yeah, no, K twelve, Dow's Lane, we have thirty-one, I'm, I'm ninety percent sure we have thirty-one students at Dow's Lane receiving services. Does that sound right, Randy?
It's also kind of complicated going, thinking about this year versus next year. Because in the past, under the current regulations, I should say,
Yes.
Students who test out by passing the proficiency on the NICE exam, exit services. But going forward, students who exit next, start the next year, they have to continue to receive services. So, in some ways, it's a little bit of an apples and oranges comparison, because we will have more students next year even though they pass the proficiency, and we need to continue to provide.
So, there's a, there's a more intensive level that students presumably start with and then as-
And the model, fifty percent of, roughly fifty percent of the instruction now has to be integrated, which means the ENL teacher has to put into the classroom, not just pull them out of the classroom.
Yeah, yeah.
So, they're spread.
So, and that's partly driving, and that's, I guess, partly driving the need for more staffing, right? Is this just this greater complexity in the process? Is this just this greater complexity in the process?
But we'll, we'll provide the, the data at the school.
So, and the point, I guess my point was, it's not, not as much that we're getting, maybe we are, a lot more students without, without strong English proficiency to start, but that, the way we have to, the requirements, basically they're state requirements, I guess.
The regulations have increased dramatically.
Yeah.
And this is a requirement.
This is a requirement.
Yeah, yeah, right, and it seems, nobody's quarreling with that. On the, on budget consideration eight, I was going to ask, and I sort of got the answer in Robin's questioning, but I just want to understand it. The, the idea of purchasing necessary, or maybe this isn't the, is this the equipment line? Or is this something different?
It's equipment.
Okay, so, so equipment includes furniture.
Yes.
And, you know, I was going to ask, well, don't we basically have to spend a certain amount? I mean, because furniture has a lifespan, it doesn't last, especially probably furniture that kids use, doesn't last forever. And you, every year, you have to replace X percent of it if you're going to keep a reasonably good, you know, stock of furniture over time, right? And don't we basically have to spend something like this, 37,000 every year to do that, or?
Good, but this district historically has cut their instructional equipment for many, many years when you were trying to balance the budget. And that was one of the line items that always seemed to hit the chopping block.
Mm-hmm.
So we're trying to restore some of that.
Okay, so are, is this, is this greater than the sort of, kind of going forward, steady state amount we would need to kind of do the right amount of upkeep or furniture?
Actually, this is probably.
Is this kind of catch up, or is this?
No, this is probably less, this is probably basic.
This is, this is probably looking at our bare minimum where, where we know we need to make a replacement. And in areas where furniture is still serviceable, we're still intending on using it.
Well, yeah, I mean, that, well, okay, I don't know what's serviceable. You know, you can judge better than I with what you mean by serviceable, but.
Not broken.
Well, it's, it is a little confusing just because the approved budget was 56,000, right? And then with the push ahead, which include, I mean, with the new budget considerations, which I suppose takes this into account, the nu, the new number is 48,000, which is still lower than what we spent last year.
Wait, sorry, I missed what you said, I was.
Is that 27 or 37? Did we start typo there somewhere?
It says 27, 413 here.
But it says 37 in the presentation.
I'm looking at 37.
Yeah, in the spreadsheet, it says 27.
Oh, so which is it?
Yeah, which is it?
Yeah, but I think it's, it's over in the other code too.
Did you notice?
10,000?
Yeah, in the 2010s, I think.
Oh, so the real total is 37, something, it's just not.
I don't know where the other 10 is.
Is it not under instruction?
The other 10, it shows up in slide 23 under supervision equipment, there's 10,000 there.
Okay.
Because it's all, it's under instruction.
Okay, okay.
But the point still is that.
It's still 37.
That you're not spending a lot more money this year than you spent last year, so.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, I just wonder whether.
We would be more than happy to replace a lot more furniture.
Well, as with, as with defenders, but, but I guess the question is, what, what is the right number in order to really have the sort of physical plan that we think would be best for, you know, without being wasteful, what would be best for, you know, our operations? And if that's not 37, what is it? That's all I have. Oh, um, sorry, let me check, I forgot I had another set of notes. Oh, well, will, will you also talk about, in the next presentation, will you also talk about enrollment?
We, I don't have the data here, but we can talk about that, yes.
Okay, just in terms of roughly what we're looking at.
We do typically do that now, I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, yeah, because I know it's been going down some, and I don't know if that trend is what we're looking at. Okay, that's all I have.
Does anybody want to expect, express any preferences at this point? Or do you want to wait until later budget meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like it's really hard to do that until we really see what the overall increase is. You know, all of these things are, I'm convinced they're all nice to haves, but, and maybe even more than that in some cases, but what we can afford and what we want to pay for is a totally different thing. We don't know enough to do that yet.
Right.
Onto co-curricular.
Technical issues this evening.
So how much do we add to the budget for this thing?
For this thing? This has been in-house, this, John, this was serviceable.
Oh, yeah, you can yell.
Randy, oh, there it is, it just came up.
Very good. I've never had so many technical difficulties in one evening, but. So our next area, we referenced a little while ago, and we're talking about the co-curricular budget areas. And you can see this is an area where there, there can be a little bit of confusion here. We're looking at a category budget variance of 2.36%. We're looking at a total increase of $2,800. We're introducing some new initiatives, some of $5,500. But because of some budgeting requirements with respect to BOSEs, and you'll see another one come up later, some redirection of funds and money having to be moved to other codes, you actually see a bit of a decrease here. We also, some, one point, the first bullet there above the BOSEs reference, I think is important to, to reference, is the fact that we're looking at some different folks that are leading clubs, so they're coming in at a lower step on the, on the schedule. So there's a little bit of savings from one year to the next as well. But just very generally speaking, and as was reflected in the conversations last week, at both the middle school and at Main Street School, Mr. Sotile and Ms. Chapnick expressed the desire to increase club funds. So we identified a figure that we believe that they would be able to introduce an additional club at each school and this estimated figure for the related stipend. And then that is reflected here in the budget, budget summary. So Dr. Core, I don't know if you want to.
Could I just ask a question about that, just a simple question?
Sure.
So is that really enough money? I mean, it seems like a paltry sum of money in a $55 million budget.
Paltry sum? It is not a large amount of money, no. We could maybe have a similar conversation as we had with furniture. But it, it presents that opportunity to, to add additional clubs, reflecting the interest that may be present in each of the schools. You know, we're looking at big picture, and that could be something that we revisit moving forward. But that was to satisfy some of the requests that came forward.
A lot of things to hold on to.
So now we're going to move to curriculum improvement and administration. You can notice there in the second line, it's really that 1.18% and 20,000 result of new initiatives that are focused on. So there are no new, unlike the considerations from the previous part.
Unlike the considerations from the previous slides, this has just a couple of points that we wanted to highlight for you. And I think this maybe goes back to what Robin said that might have been helpful, is to just point out a couple of pieces here. So I'll point that out, and then maybe in the future, we could add a sentence or a line where that would be, where that would surface. So basically, what's worth pointing out here is the increase in the BOSEs 490 code. So if you look at, oh, I can do it right here. If you look at this column, that's the column that's helpful to sort of see where those increases are showing up. So the 490, the 4,050, that's a new piece of software, a subscription service to Ames Web. So part of our focus on the implementation of response to intervention, and I think some of our challenges in these previous two years has been not having what you would call a progress monitoring tool. So, in other words, if we identify that a student has a specific need, and we say that the teacher in the classroom is going to do a tier-one intervention, you have to have a way to monitor that to know, did the student's progress change? And most school districts at this point use a product called Ames Web. And we have not purchased it in the past. And what we're finding is, is that our response to intervention program is not as effective because we don't really have a resource that we can be using as a guide. So just one more point that I'm going to make about that is, what a tool like Ames Web does is it also brings consistency to how the teachers are providing the intervention and then measuring it. So right now, it's a little bit, I'm one teacher, I may do it one way, I'm a different teacher, I may do it another way. But what Ames Web does is it helps you to target the intervention and then monitor it across, or across the grade level.
An annual, annual subscription?
It's an annual subscription, yes. And just so that you know, and some of you may realize this, anytime something is listed as part of a BOSEs code, that means that it's debatable. So that cost that you're seeing there for the 4,050, again, similar to our conversation about the O C Ed, anything that's under a BOSEs code would be, ultimately, we would see funds back in the following year. The other piece that I'll point out is that 10,000, that's the 10,000 that we were just talking about for the PLT W, when Bev said that, I'm sorry, the furniture, when Bev said that the 10,000 is on the other slide here, that's where Bev said that it is. And, I'm just thinking, is there anything else that I'm going to? The 6,100, that's part, that again, if I go back, and I think Robin's suggestion would be helpful if we could cross-reference, I think it would help, it would make more sense. So there, the professional development that you saw, this is the Project Lead the Way slide. As Bev indicated, everything needs to go into the right code. So even though we have it on this slide, it actually didn't show up here on the proposed instruction budget, it actually shows up on this, the curriculum improvement budget code.
Why the decrease in administrative salaries?
Bev?
Okay, last year when we did the budget, there was an estimation that Dr. Core was going to go to Main Street. And then that changed after the budget was in place, so we had shifts at that point.
We're projecting for a higher salary at Main Street.
I saved you some money. What, do you, I know these, this next series of slides, unlike instruction, are much shorter. There are not a lot of considerations. So do you want me to stop, or do you want me to keep going? Do you, would you like to ask questions? There's just not as much meat there like, as there were in the consideration slides.
Keep going.
Okay. So the next series of slides speak to library. So our library budget, as you can see, the result of new initiatives is 14, about $1,400. So each year, our, a very, very significant chunk of money for library supports databases. And those are K-12, so each library media specialist has a variety of research and resources that are made available to both students and teachers. So basically, what you're seeing here again is a limited change. There was a request to have some higher level literature databases at our high school to support our English program. Instructional technology, so we'll take you through the result of the new initiatives here. So as you can see, 2.06%, the result of the new initiative, 19,000. The heart, the heart of the change that you'll see, oops, sorry, that you'll see there is that equipment, so that's that 16,000. And what you're seeing there is those iPads. So again, it's that cross-referencing from one slide to another, but it has to be placed in the correct budget code. Can I?
And just to remind, that's, those will go to Dowslane.
Dowslane and Main Street School.
Yeah, all right.
The instructional salary?
Yeah, that's a huge variance.
I'm sorry, Robin.
There was a reclassification, there was a reclassification of, of one instructional teacher.
So then we're going to see the corresponding decrease in another category?
You would, you would see a lower increase in instructional salaries.
Right, so this, the offset's going to be in the, in the, in the very first spreadsheet that we saw. It's just that the numbers in that, in that instructional salary line are so huge that you don't really see the savings so much.
Okay.
Because there is an offset going on within that line that's going to be all the contractual increases. Right, so if we go back to the very first thing. So this would be like in, in 120, 130, or 110?
So was this, is this the new, is this the data assistant person that we, is this the data position that we created?
The reclassification was our middle school technology teacher, Marcus Oates, originally was sitting in the general instructional line.
General instruction, okay.
And Bev moved him over to this line because he's truly a technology.
And so that would have been under the 130 code, you said, middle school?
Whatever school he was in.
Middle school.
Yeah, one, yeah, it would have been middle school.
130.
130.
And you do see that that increase is substantially lower than the other, the other increases, right?
Yep.
It's only, so the total increase is 1.7%, right? And the others are 4.2 and 2.7, so it does seem like there's an, there's an offset that's lowering it.
Okay, the other change, you'll see the 2,500 there. Actually, that's, we've identified two pieces of software subscriptions. So Exam Gen is one of the requests that, I know, isn't that funny? That one of the requests that was made at the high school level, and as well as Camtasia. So those are the two requests that you're seeing there, which are resulting in that 2,500 dollars.
What was the other one?
Camtasia.
CAM?
CAM, C-A-M-T-A-S-I-A.
And which line is that, sorry, which budget code?
The 2,500.
400.
400.
400.
400.
Yeah, I see it.
Central data processing budget points, so you're going to see here a fairly significant number of 9,600 as a result of a new initiative. And basically, for one, this is a one-year cost. It's to purchase something called SSRPM, which is self-service reset password management. So we have a significant need, especially as we've moved into a BYOD environment, to have a self-managing service where people are able to change their own passwords. And that is not something that we had in place. So the SSRPM allows users to reset their own passwords. That becomes more and more significant as we've opened up the campus and you have certainly all of our high school students accessing and using our network. So this is a one-time purchase, and it would be ultimately K-12 as needed, but it is just for this year.
And that's the 9,600?
That, yes.
And the $45,000 variance?
On BOSEs services?
On BOSEs services.
Mostly BOSEs services.
Well, it's 40, pardon me, it's 42, it's 42,209 in the spreadsheet.
Some of that's just reclassification, like 2010, 490 went down by like 10,000. Our new treasurer, Anne Marie Tromer, was working with BOSEs closely because BOSEs gives us their COSER numbers, and they also give us our accounting numbers. And, and some of the services were not in the proper places, so she's been doing a lot of correcting.
Is there any way in these presentate, in these tables, or maybe it's a supplementary table, to break out the effect of the reclassifications? Because it's kind of hard to follow what's really functionally going on when things are reclassified like that. And so if we could kind of do a pro forma or something where you don't have the, or either you go back and redo the previous year, or you don't do this year for those reclassifications, just so we know?
I probably, maybe.
At least for the major ones?
On it or something?
Yeah, footnotes would be, whatever, whatever, you know, works.
Okay.
You know, you know, footnote saying this, except for this, this is, this is subject to this much reclassification or whatever.
Okay.
Because I think it, it would make it easier for people to understand.
Right, because that, on, without having the footnote, you'd look at that and say, why are we spending 64% more?
Yeah, and I think we need it both ways, where if something is going down because of that, we should have it too.
So, something that you'll notice, I'm just going back to the central data processing, just to point out again the structure, so on the second line of this slide, you'll notice result of new initiatives. So, as we move into the guidance budget points, there is no new initiative as a result, although, yeah, I guess I'm, I'm not sure, Bev, why?
The increase in budget, that was because of increase in Naviance?
Yeah, so, did it, but did it balance out?
It's under push-ahead, because it's, we already have Naviance?
Got it, yep.
So, it's just a.
Okay, I just, okay, that's, you clarified, I wasn't sure why it didn't show up. So, our, our request here is we'd like to increase Naviance, to, we'd like to expand Naviance to be K-12. Right now, we have a piece of Naviance at the middle school, and we have Naviance at the high school, but they're, oddly enough, they function as two separate pieces. So, our goal would, Emily Coleman has been instrumental in helping us to look at how this Naviance can actually be introduced at the middle school, and so, as students come into high school, and both students and parents would be familiar and well-versed in Naviance, so, we think that that's a great addition for us.
And you were saying it's not a new budgetary consideration because Naviance already exists, or?
Right. Okay, special education, so here you'll see certainly a significant number as a result of our new initiatives, 156,000. I guess I'll try and, and I'll be a little passionate here, maybe as passionate about needing a clerical person, certainly, the changes and the needs in our district across the board when it comes to special education have just been, they just keep, they do keep growing, and we offer some very good, strong programs, and we continue to build them. One of the things that's happened, though, as we've built our programs at the K-5 level, and even at the middle school level, we have not built it as significantly at the high school level, so we have far more students, and we don't necessarily have more teachers. And that's created significant scheduling issues, times where, where we have not been able to offer the kind of, will offer the core, a support in ninth grade, but then we don't offer it in 10th grade. So, clearly, this year, what you're seeing is a request from both the middle school and high school. David has certainly also spoken passionately over these last couple of years about really being able to support the students in all core academics. Currently, the middle school cannot do that. Initially, many, many years ago, when we had lots of phases of math, the math was not supported, but we know that that's not a good idea. Math needs to be supported in the middle school within a collaborative environment, but really, so does social studies, science, and ELA. So, the request that you're seeing for the middle school is really to support that ICT model, because we do have students who are struggling in their core academics when that model doesn't exist. At the high school, I think, I think you've heard the very high numbers of students with IEPs, as well as students with 504 plans at the high school, and our numbers of special education teachers is not, is, is low. So, in order for us to really prepare our students and provide those opportunities, both in a collaborative classroom, resource room, as well as just academic supports that we provide, K-8, the high school really is in need of another special education teacher. So, I think that we have a lot of data at our high school in terms of our numbers of students who do have IEPs and 504s, that we definitely have an imbalance in the personnel to support all of the, all of our students. In addition, this has been on the docket for quite a few years, not having a special education chair, so we have a chairperson for every other area, every core academic, the arts. Special education has not had a chair. Many years ago, we actually did, but it's been a long time since we have. And what happens is our special education teachers, first of all, are not necessarily represented at the table, so when all the chairs are working with Dave, Deb, David, and Allison, lots of different issues, topics work, curriculum work gets discussed, and there's no one there representing. So, with the middle school, it's less of an issue, because the teachers are linked to a team. So, if I'm a, if I'm working in a seventh, with the seventh grade, I'm getting that information because of the team model. But at the high school, it doesn't work that way, the system isn't built like that. So, very often, we'll roll something out, or we'll think that everybody knows something because all the chairs were there, and then the special education teacher didn't know it because they were not part of the planning. But more importantly, I think, when it comes to a chair, is we have then students who are underrepresented. So, that, very often, our special educators are the ones sitting at the table who are saying, well, wait a minute, like, how are we going to do this, or what is that going to look like? When we talk about any kind of testing at the high school level, whether we're doing AP testing, Regents testing, the students who require extra time, that is a huge layer, and we really need to make sure that our students are getting the correct supports, and that that organization and structure has a leader behind it who advocates the same way that our social studies chair, and science chair, and arts chairs do for their programs. So, this is an area, this is a significant area of need in building that leadership team at the high school. The other piece where we see a very big disconnect that we'd love to, and we think we could change, is with guidance. Having a liaison of the special education chair to our guidance department, it's critical. For those of you who know at our middle school, our guidance counselors are interfacing with our special education teachers every single day, working on stu, with students and their needs. We need that liaison. High school level becomes more and more disconnected, more individualized, and so, not having a special education chair, I think, is also significantly impacting our students, meeting our students' needs through their guidance department as well. So, as you can see here, this is pretty straightforward, because that previous slide just outlined that number.
Except for the fact that, what is the enormous increase in the push-ahead budget, the 252,000 that comes to 8 percent? That just seems hard to, that's all contract, contracts? It's resulting in 8 percent increase, so the instructional, you see in the?
Yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah, it's an interesting, and also, the overall push-ahead budget increases high too for this.
You know, teachers moving up different steps besides steps, moving lanes, but that's the actual number.
That's how it goes.
I think we had a lot of new hires, so maybe they are moving up steps, versus a lot of people who've been around a while, I'm guessing.
So, new hires tend to move up, percentage-wise move up quickly?
Yeah, well, because you've got steps, the old people are maxed out, so they don't step anymore, they just get the percentage.
Step when they don't jump lanes.
There's a little number in there, it says new FTE, 2.2.
That impacts the budget considerations.
Oh, that's okay.
That's that.
But, but it's interesting that the overall increase, the overall push-ahead increase is so high too.
Nine percent.
It's 9.24 percent.
Yeah, it's a, very substantial, it's, once again, the tuition.
Yeah, tuition, J-C-O-S.
Also, too, is you'll see in the push-ahead budget, there's a significant change in contractual J-C-O-S. They're anticipating a huge number of new students there, and you will see it also offsetting increase on the revenue side, because we, you know, it's a, we're a flow-through funds, basically.
Okay.
So, we have no control over that amount, but we have to make it as a budget line.
Right, but this is something where the budget doesn't really reflect the true net cost to the district, which is essentially nil, you said?
It's nil, but it does increase the total overall budget, because you're increasing the expenses and the revenues.
Right, but doesn't, doesn't, doesn't.
Doesn't impact your taxes.
Right.
And it's because they aren't getting that many more students?
Right.
They're expanding.
Scott can address that.
They've been, they've been running a huge drive to increase the number of students down there, and they're really expecting that to double in population.
So, it has doubled from June to today.
Huge impact on our department in terms of providing services for those students, and not so much this year, because the services have to be adjusted by students first, nor doesn't serve this year. All those students that they've been collecting that were not currently serving will jump into effect student first, and will be serving first in 2020.
Which does take staff time, then, right?
We can, we contract out for those services, or they can take from our staff, but it increases that budget line, because we're contracting for hours.
Yeah, I was going to say, but where, there is a burden, though, is you have to understand, where you contract those services, there's still the clerical and administration, administrative burden that sits on your shoulders.
And all of, every one of those students needs to have a meeting in order to have the services.
So, there, and that takes your.
Hours of CSE time.
Yeah, okay, so that's real, real, so that means that, that means we need extra staff elsewhere to make up for that.
And we can't bill for those hours, we can bill for the direct service time, we can bill for the time, we can bill for the people actually sitting in the CSE, but we can't bill clerical support and the administrative work behind the CSE.
And the fact that we do all this, all goes back to state or federal law, I guess?
State.
But the fact that this is in our district.
State law, state law.
Yeah.
Wait.
Good, I'm sorry.
Not asking questions?
No, sure, yeah.
A question on the chairperson, because it seems like so much of what's been described, not all, but it seems like it's more of a high school chairperson that you need than a six to 12, because a lot of the things that you talked about were, like, within the high school, working with the guidance counselors in the high school, and talking about the testing accommodated, and which is middle school too, but I guess I'm operationally trying to picture in my mind how one person in the period allocated to a chairperson is really going to be able, in that role for special ed, to serve six to 12. It seems like it's really, it's on high school, middle school.
No, I would say, I mean, all of our chairs are six to 12, I mean, some are actually K-12, but certainly, our core academic chairs are all six to 12. I think the needs are different at the middle school, but I think we have a, and we actually just met today to talk about transitions, transitions eighth to ninth grade, that would be a huge help for a chair, but to work with the eighth-grade special education teachers as well. I also would imagine that that person would be very helpful in even talking about our sixth-grade transitions. So, I think the needs are a little bit different, but certainly, some of the articulation, I also think that we've talked a lot in the past about really fleshing out what is our support programs look like, and having a chairperson who could help lead that work, for those of you who maybe, at times, maybe had children in building support classes, or how do we support students in middle school versus how we support students in high school? So, we definitely see crossover. Do I think a lot of the work would be high school? I would see, I would think it's the same as the other chairs.
Because some of what you're describing to me sounds like it would almost fall under administrative, like, curricular, I mean, you're head of curriculum, if you're talking about transitions between curriculum, it just, I mean, it sounds like what you just described sounds like a full-time job, to be honest to me. It does, like, working with transitions and working as liaison, so I'm just wondering, is some of this administrative work that needs to be done, versus the chairperson?
I would say the same as our chairs, so currently, our chairs are instructional leaders, and so, for instance, our social studies and English chairs, right now, are working on the honors process. So, somebody could call that administrative, but I would, I also would like to maybe just point out that a lot of that work is really about instruction and what our honors process looks like. So, I, I think the special ed chair would actually be almost identical to our other chairs in terms of, the needs are all different from each department as well, so I don't see it being any, that much bigger than the other chairs.
And what exactly are they working on with the honors process?
No, I'm just, every year, that's a, I mean, that's an incredibly time-consuming.
I know, but I just said, it's the first time I've heard of it, so, that you guys?
No, but that's a yearly, okay.
Let's, let's keep our budget process moving.
Okay. Other questions about this?
How did you arrive at the 19,000 for the department chair?
That is because, in discussion with Raina, I've tried to make this as realistic as possible, and she said that it would be a .8 teacher, or a 1.
Point two.
Yeah, but it would be a .8 teacher taking over this, so it would be a 1, or.
Point two.
It would be a .2, but then, another teacher would just add a sixth period, so therefore, I'd add in the sixth period plus the stipend plus summer hours, because they, then, the chair would be, yeah.
So, I'm sorry, yeah, explain that again.
So, let me, let me try. So, the chairs each, all of our chairs are 1.0 teachers, and as being a chair, they are reduced by .2. So, in order to, someone else then needs to do that .2, otherwise, Dave and Deb would be down .2. So, that calculation is to allow for the additional .2 that the special ed chair would not be teaching. You would need an additional.
Six period stipend.
So, it could be.
For budgeting purposes.
Right, yeah, plus summer hours and the stipend for this position, per contract.
Okay.
Other questions on this? Okay. So, now, we're moving on to PPS. So, very often, we see these as living together, special education and pupil personal services, because they do live together, but for budgeting, but for budgeting purposes, they actually get broken out. So, this is the PPS codes, and as you can see, is, there's 106,000, and 200, 106,230 the result of new initiatives. So, I'm going to talk you through those considerations and what the thinking is behind them. So, we are really at a, at a loss for how to have one, really, one full-time psychologist at our high school, when, as you can see, we have, our current psychologist is responsible for 80 IEPs. So, when you look across the district, just to give you perspective, K through eight, our psychologists have about 30 each. So, having a number of 80, when you think about not only just the supports and the counseling support that a psychologist might provide, but just in terms of the logistics, the meetings, and the organization alone, it's quite significant. So, we are asking for a .5 psychologist that would be at the high school, and that would be part of providing counseling, as well as supporting the infrastructure and services that we need to provide to students with IEPs.
So, you're providing IEP meetings, and then it's also providing counseling to the kids.
Right.
Those are the two.
Yes. As well as other supports, this testing, I mean, our psychologists have a lot of responsibility, and again, that ratio has just grown exponentially at the high school.
So, just, so, the middle school, you said there about 30, she has a caseload of 30 kids?
About, around 30-something, yeah.
For three grades, and at the high school, for four grades, it blows up to 80.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. For IEPs?
And then we have 75 504s. So, some of those, so not all of those IEPs require counseling, but all of those IEPs require tending. So, they all require oversight, oversight of the student, oversight, oversight as being partly case managers, working with all of the special education teachers, so it's.
Oversight of the student?
Of the IEP.
Of the IEP.
So, yes, of the student's IEP. So, as you know, she, the, our school psychologist at the high school is also the chair, so she chairs all of the meetings, and in a good system, she's really also tending to those IEPs. She's checking in, she's making sure that students' IEPs are being met, she's working with teachers if that's, if there are some supports that are necessary. Honestly, we also have plenty of high-needs students, I want to say, Chris referenced before, the medical needs that we're seeing, the psychological, the, the mental health needs at our high school, and I think high schools across the country, I don't think we're so unique, but the, is, has really changed, but we really, you need to have a psychologist who is there, and who sometimes is supporting a student who is not a mandated student, who doesn't have that IEP but is in crisis. And so, our high school right now is not able to provide that level of support to our students.
Is, can you explain the .5, why is it not 1.0 for the school psychologist?
We could change that, I mean, no.
No, I mean, you need to change, you're adding a full-time psychologist, and it's.
No, we're adding a part-time.
Half.
Yeah, half.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought I heard you say before, somewhere, I'm sorry, mine's, I thought you said a full-time, and then I'm like, okay, so why is it?
I, I think I might have said we have one full-time psychologist at the high school currently.
Oh, maybe that's what happened, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Sorry, I didn't understand that, yeah, okay.
So, in addition to the psychologist under our PPS budget consideration, and I'll direct you to expense here, zero, so I'll just going to point you there, so that you can see that this is not so much a dollars and cents question, it's really a conceptual and a, and a. this is not so much a dollars and cents question, it's really a conceptual and, and what of our, what does our infrastructure look like. So at this point, what we are recommending is, we are suggesting to eliminate, obviously, you know, the community aid position would go away, it's actually gone away at this point, we have not been able to replace our community aid who left in October. And we would be eliminating the crisis TA at Dowslane in an effort to actually have a 1.0 social worker who could not, who would be K-12, would also be able to support, provide counseling, which our community aid was not able to do under that, under that structure. So the social worker would be working across our district and also be able to fulfill the responsibilities of the community aid, but as you can see, also provide counseling as well as other consultation at all levels. So we are asking that we reinstate a social worker as part of our school district.
But you're eliminating the TA position.
Yes. We found that, you know, in, I, I think that there was a plan behind that, but I think what we're seeing, and I think some of you actually highlighted, where do, when you have somebody in that role, you want high levels of expertise. And not only can a TA position sometimes be somewhat shift and move, it's transient, sometimes there are people who are actually working towards being teachers, but we really see that we need a higher level of expertise in the mental health area, as well as the community support.
And are there any other costs that then will be added back to Dowslane to counter the loss of the TA?
Costs, did you say?
Like, extra supports, or, you know, anything else that they might need since you're pulling this, you know, you're pulling a full-time person away.
Right.
So is there something else that's going to replace it, or is it just nothing?
Well, to some degree, the social worker is going to replace some of that, but not-
I just mean anything that's school-specific, like Dowslane.
No, it would, no, it'd be across-
Is there no other budget item coming up?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Other questions?
I do, I do.
Oh.
And a school psychologist, the cost versus the benefit, the ratio is, the load factor's incredibly low compared to what we've been seeing. So can you explain why that one is so different than the other one?
Oh, it's because part-time, they don't get help.
They don't get help.
So it's missing the twenty grand?
Hmm, that's neat.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
So I, maybe one final point on this front, and I think Reina did a nice job in highlighting this. When we talk about our students' need here, whether it is the psychologist, whether it is the social worker, we're looking not, students of all ability levels. We're looking at some of our highest achieving students, we're looking at students that struggle academically. We're seeing many, many kids with needs, and this is an opportunity to, to certainly serve everybody. One-
I did have one question, more question on this. If, if you're going to move on to a different topic, I just wanted to ask my one question.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Can, can you explain what, what's the difference between what the social worker would do and the psychologist would, I'm just kind of confused about what, what a social worker's function is as compared with a psychologist?
Sure. The social worker, you know, as you know, we had a community aide for all of this time, a social worker-
Well, I didn't, don't know that, but okay, but you tell me, I believe you.
You know, a social worker is somebody who also works very closely with families, families in need, community supports. And when I say families in need, I'm not just, I'm not talking about financial need, I'm really talking about some of-
There's crises.
Exactly. And so that wouldn't be the role, the psychologist, a school psychologist is really there to support a student's academic success in school. They're not therapists.
Okay.
So a social worker serves a different role.
But the social worker isn't a therapist either, right?
No, but what I'm saying is-
They're kind of case man, more case, more, more holistic approach to-
But a psychologist wouldn't necessarily reach out and be providing the level of support at, to the family that a social worker would provide.
It's my understanding that a social worker is not allowed to be in the classroom with the kids.
A commu, the community aide.
Community aide couldn't, a social worker can.
A, a social worker can be in the classroom?
Can, but a community aide could not.
That's interesting, that's not what I've heard from families that worked with their prior social worker.
She was a community aide, even though she-
She happened to be-
That was a social worker. Her title was social worker, but her-
No, no, her title was never social worker, she was a community aide, because she was a community aide, she could not.
Oh, that makes sense, okay.
But she was a social worker, so that's what confused people.
Okay.
Right, she was the community aide, not allowed.
Okay, got it.
Let's move on.
But the person who we had was.
Yeah, okay.
So, so we could talk passionately on that topic for, for hours. But quickly onto athletics. So you can see the highlights of, of the increases, the seven point two, one percent, and the two mid threes and variances. The primary motivator or driving factor here, of course, is salaries, but we do have two considerations. One is just looking at the replacement of aging equipment. We have a pole vault pit that, that we need to replace, that would be out at the track. And we have soccer goals and field hockey goals that they've hit the end of their useful life. Total cost for those items would be twenty-three thousand dollars. And the other item for consideration is looking at our coaches. When you travel to a sporting event, not only do you often see the student athletes come out of their bus onto the field in matching apparel, but the coaches often do as well. It's a point of pride, it's a point of identification. I think it's also a safety and security measure for us, that when we have one coach supervising an event and a team, that our, our coaches are identified. We don't provide that for our coaches, and I think it's a matter of pride, and I think it's a matter of some sense of responsibility and a consideration that I think certainly would benefit our programs. So with that, you see the, the increases that were reflected here. Twenty-three thousand dollars, the six thousand dollars for the apparel for the coaches, the fifteen hundred dollars that you see referenced there is actually for maintenance contract for our fitness room equipment, which we do not have at this point in time. And when we consider its usage, it's certainly in our interest to make sure that the equipment's being serviced, not only to preserve its life, but to also, to make sure that we don't have any unsafe situations that represent.
Fifteen hundred there, that's the fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred dollars, yes.
The pole vault pit, wouldn't that get replaced with the new field, et cetera?
It was not something that we budgeted within the bond.
Wait, we didn't budget for the pole vault?
Yeah. Pole vault pit, I thought they, they pole vault onto a big cushion.
Yeah, and that's what the reference is, that's the-
Actually, not a pit, it's-
No, it's, it's the, it's the term that's used for-
So, and it's a movable, portable thing.
Correct, correct. And I do want to say, maybe Phil, to your point, when we look at soccer goals, when we look at the field hockey goals, we have, those are included certainly in, in the bond figures at this point, but we have soccer goals and field hockey goals that are used across the district that need to be replaced as well.
And to the extent we have a long jump pit, that would actually be part of the budget.
That, yes, we're, we're not going to buy that pit, John.
We'll dig it ourselves.
So, and I guess in sum, just a reference to the slide, in looking at where we are today, this is a summary of all the considerations that Reina and I discussed today, for a total sum of a number just shy of seven hundred thirteen thousand dollars. So how quickly the money adds up. But when we step back and we think about where we are, you know, we have a lot of passionate conversation in this room, but it's all conversation in and around improving experiences for our children. So when we think about that, and we think about what we put on the table, I think we present opportunities here, we're going to expand programs, we're going to better support students, and we're going to enhance resources for every child in our district. I think these are opportunities that certainly are going to make our schools better and enhance experiences for all of our children. I think we have a ton to be proud of, and in doing so, these are initiatives that will, that certainly enhance not only our standing, but the experiences for our kids. So tonight, any further question and comment certainly is welcome. We'll process that and bring it back to the board in our future presentations. And then finally, we have a number of meetings coming up. So if you want to know where I will be for the next two months in the evening, you can look up here, and we'll be having a lot of wonderful budget discussions throughout the community. Still a couple to be determined, but we're working out those dates as we speak. And then finally, our budget address. Any questions or comments, I encourage anyone in the public to email those questions to budget@irvingtonsschools.org, and we will be sure to share those questions with the board and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any further comments at this point? We asked a lot of questions, and I'd love to hear from our patient community members if, but John, you had one thing?
Yeah, this is a, I guess this is an ask on, on my part. I feel like I'm, I've just, you know, gone to a, a nice store and seen all these wonderful things I can buy, and, and then I'm seeing what impact it's going to have on my credit card. And my question is, this is all on top of everything we already spend money on. It would be very, very helpful, I think, to look at our existing push-ahead budget and ask, if we have to do without some things in that, in order to get some of these wonderful new ideas, what would we do without? I mean, is there anything, or is everything you're proposing less important than everything we already have in the budget? Or is there something that, you know, if we had to make trade-offs, there's something we could give up? You know, because it may be, this is a, you know, these are nice things, but, you know, I, I just don't know that, it's obvious that it's, everything it's already on top of is all money that's all well-spent. It feels like we should have some sense of that.
Yeah.
Because we're, we don't want to raise taxes if we don't have to. What was that?
I said, you don't have to answer that now.
No, no, that, that's a-
It's a question for, for work, investigation.
It's an ask, exactly, exactly. I don't expect an answer now, but I, I do want, I think it would be helpful to have-
Yeah.
Some information about that in future meetings on the budget. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So finally, we get to hear from our community members. Remember the rules. State your name, where you live, and two minutes, please, is the allotted time. And also, we don't have a lot of people here, but you speak once and let everybody else speak, and then if you want to add a comment, you do it after everybody else has already spoken. So, please. Jen?
Hello, my name's Jen Williams. This is my first meeting, so thank you, guys. I'm very impressed with how this all went.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. We came today, myself, Christina, Vinay, Andreas, and, you know, as you alluded to shopping, I want to see more when it comes to technology. I think there's some great things out there. You know, I've really enjoyed talking to Jessie and Joyce and Randy about ideas and visions. You know, as we're sitting here, we kind of tested the Wi-Fi, we chatted with some students when we came in. My babysitter, who's really going to kill me because she's in eleventh grade, I didn't realize he'd went so long, gave me her view on technology. Kids our carpool with in sixth grade have given me their thoughts. My fifth grader has said things like, you know, I've used laptops maybe three times over two years in the classrooms. You know, so I get, I, I definitely love the things I'm hearing from Jessie, but more, commit yourselves to making Wi-Fi work, put the networks in, put the infrastructure in. And then also, get great people, okay? This-
Project Lead.
Amazing, awesome, who are phenomenal, fantastic, energetic people behind it that are going to make it happen. So those are the things I want to hear more about, get excited about, and thank you.
Thank you.
Slightly different spin. So I'm Christina Diallo, I live at forty-five Sheldon. Those are the rules?
Yes, well done.
Take the start.
Yep.
So first of all, congratulations on putting together a budget with so many pieces that are unknown. I can't even imagine what that's like, and I'm starting to get a glimmer of that, so you should really be proud of yourselves, and you have a really good transparent process. I'm very happy to see a lot of the investments that you're putting up there in the programs. A lot of schools are really struggling and cutting back programs, so to see some of those programs start to get reinvested in, it was great to see the occupational education, the world language, Project Lead the Way, special ed, and the consciousness about pulling teachers out for professional development is huge. I mean, it's just, it's very great to see those types of initiatives. I am also concerned about the low emphasis on technology, and I have similar experiences, and I've shared that, about the, not really knowing where things are, and seeing not as much of a financial investment today, makes me wonder what it is that we're going to be doing going forward. So it might be sprinkled in places that we can't see, it would be great to highlight it as this is the approach. But you have to also invest, so I'm happy to spend your credit card if we could put some more money towards it, in terms of where the investments can be. Because my son, much like Jen's, it just, they're not seeing the access in the classroom, and he's in fifth grade. So if the, you know, infrastructure is there, then what's the access look like? What's, what are the next steps?
Yeah. Can I just respond with both respective technology questions? Encourage you to go back and watch two meetings ago? I think it was, there was a technology presentation, the presentation materials are on the district website. I saw an email go around today that the presentation was on the PTSA website, thanks to Michael Hannah. And in there, we talk about, not only in more detail about Project Lead the Way, some of the other initiatives that are going on, and investment in infrastructure and devices that we intend on recommending for next year.
And, and I think it was in December, that presentation?
December?
January thirteenth.
January thirteenth? It all seems like a long time.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Vinay?
Hi, Vinay Taker for Otley Avenue. So continuing on the theme, I want to make some observation on, on Project Lead, and I know it's been covered elsewhere, I'll probably go back and look at that. But for a program that's preparing students for college credit, we seem to be spending about seven thousand dollars roughly here, and thirty-eight thousand are for, if you count the iPad and the supplies, are more for Dowslane and middle school towards IT. Right? So that, bit of a disconnect for me there in terms of, hey, is this a program geared towards college credits? Then where, where's the money being spent, right? Is this the right way to spend it? And, and to kind of add to that a story, last week I was recruiting summer interns at Rutgers and at NJIT. It was shocking to find how under-prepared these kids were for work environment. They were indicating that the support from the professors was completely lacking, and the kids were learning programming by basically Googling stuff, right? They were, they were literally relying on Google for that. There was one kid who blew me away, completely blew me away. This girl was, had a project to figure out in Rutgers, saying, are the buses crowded in the campus, right? And they thought, okay, how do we solve this? And one idea was, let's count the number of people getting in, and how many people are getting off to figure this out. Then they said, okay, we are technologists, let's use technology. And they used, they said, most kids have mobile phones these days, right? Is there a way we could count mobile phones? And they figured out how to take a laptop, put it in a promiscuous mode, so it could figure out mobile phones, and you can do that today. I could figure out all your mobile phones, count them, and they tested that in the cafeteria, and they counted the number of students and matched, right? They went to the library, did the same thing, and matched, right? So then the one person got on the bus and had this thing on, and they saw how many people were getting on and off, right? This was a project-based way to do it, right? She probably Googled her way through, right? But guess what, she's going to get hired, right? I would like to see some, a program like that, prepare kids in that way, right? The focus should be on real-life projects, which gives them, that, that's really what cuts it, this is what, I would hire somebody in my firm. Thank you.
Thank you. That's great, great story. Anything else? Nope. Good, okay. All right. So that concludes our comments from the community, and we are kind of wrapping up our budget discussion, and we're going to quickly talk about our committee liaison reports. You guys have the energy to do that right now? Thank you for coming. The curriculum committee report is our first item.
Um, I've got to find my notes.
Defer it if you want.
Wow, bye.
Do you want me to start?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I mean, yeah, we-
Okay.
Go ahead.
We met on January twenty-third. Some of this you might think is repetitive, because kind of Reina and Chris have already kind of spoken about some of these points. So we started off the meeting talking about Project Lead the Way, and talking about how we had this provisional license certification, how, when they started this program- we had this provisional license certification, how, when they started this program six years ago, it was meant to be a four-year sequence class that we were supposed to be offering, and we were building into that, but somehow it has not happened. So, there was a discussion about adding classes to the high school offerings so kids can take college credit classes for Project Lead the Way. Is that kind of, in a nutshell? Okay.
It was definitely a three-year sequence when we put it in, because I was on the board when we put it in. It was a three-year sequence. I'm assuming it's kind of changed now.
Right, but you need a four-year time. It's a four-year, right? They talked about how there's two intro classes that you must take to then go on within the sequence, and talking about the flexibility, how you could offer one class one year, and offer the second intro class the following year, and doing every other year offering, so the impact to personnel, they didn't envision needing to add anyone to personnel. We had to ask that question. Why do I have here half semester classes? That was a question made.
It's full.
It's full year, okay. So, Project Lead the Way, K-5, it's called Launch Middle School, it's called Gateway, and the high school, it's called Project Lead the Way.
I don't think you have to go through so much detail. I mean, I think we, I think the clocks of what we talked about is what Reyna kind of summarized today and last week, which is, they're looking at rolling out a few modules in, I believe, grade three, grade four. And currently, based on our curriculum, we have some modules that are embedded in our technology elective in middle school. So, we're looking at basically going three and up, and the classes that we currently have, some modules embedded, those grades we might just leave alone, and the grades that we don't have it embedded, essentially, we're looking at adding. I mean, that's kind of a good summary, I guess. And then the details of how we would roll that out. I think some of the key points were that the science aligns with the New York State standards, so it's a nice fit. Reyna thinks it would be a good complement. It's, as Reyna said, it's easy to roll out a few modules. We don't have to commit to a year-long program. She thinks it dovetails nicely with our existing curriculum in those grades. And I guess, and we talked about the high school. So, I mean, I think that's just the summary. We went through a lot of detail, and I guess if anyone has any questions about the detail, they can either talk to, probably Reyna's the best person, they could talk to me, or Maria, or Reyna, and if needs be, I think we could, you know, probably do a more detailed overview here if there's an interest for it. You know, I guess to me, the other key point is that it's, you're kind of positioning as our kind of, to the future, and where we're going to go with STEM and technology is you're kind of viewing this as the foundation for how we move forward. So, I think that's really the key, is, you know, it's, not only are we committing to this year's budget, but to me, if we commit to this year's budget, we're all kind of making a commitment to a longer-term approach. I mean, it would be a shame to, you know, do this for a year or two, and then pull back and go in another direction. So, I think we're really looking at making a long-term, you know, at least at this point, it's on the table, of making a long-term commitment to this program and this approach for moving forward.
I think it's, to your point, I think it's worth talking about it some more, but not at 10:30 at night. Because it is important, and I just know that I won't be retaining the information.
Yeah. No, no, I was just to give you an...
Of course, right. Yeah, but I think it would be great to have some more conversation about it. So, we'll just make sure we schedule that.
At some future meeting.
No, I think we have like two budget meetings that are essentially discussion on budget topics, so we can highlight those items that we want to spend time on.
Yeah, and I'm still, maybe because I didn't attend last meeting, but I'm still not, there's a lot I still kind of confused about.
With Project Lead the Way. Yeah, yeah, so we need to talk about some more. Communications committee, meeting. We mostly talked about the budget communications, the typical forums that we do, and the email communications that we do. I actually don't remember that, did we add anything specific this year that's going to be new? I don't recall if we added any new ideas.
I think we just talked about, you know, there's stuff that's not on the calendar yet that we always do, that we'll be doing again. Chris is going to reach out to certain community groups.
We have everything planned except for half-moon, which we're in the, we're in the process of, all right. It's done. I think April 29th was the last date I saw an email.
And I mean, I think, we didn't really talk about this, but I was thinking about it. I think as always, if there's a need, add something, or to come up with something different, I think we're all flexible, and we all want to figure out a way to reach out to the community. It's just a question of, you know, what is that? You know, we want to be most effective in terms of our time, your time, and, you know, getting people's involvement. We also talked about the logo.
Right.
And we talked about, there's been an ongoing need for some overall branding for Irvington Schools. I know Chris has been looking at, you know, what other schools are doing. I know you guys have talked to Dobbs Ferry about what they did, and I think we all kind of agree there's a need to move forward. We talked about ways to do it, but I think in terms of timing, we agreed that, you know, right now, the focus is budget, and we probably pick that up and kind of start to move forward after the budget, and then hopefully even over the summer, because we felt like if there's community volunteers involved, then hopefully that would be a good time when there wasn't so many other demands from a school perspective, that we could begin to really make inroads and move it forward.
Well said. What do you mean by branding?
Like, letterhead, logos, bulldogs. Like, right now, if you go into every gym, there's like some different-looking bulldog somewhere. And, you know, generally, in corporate America, you wanted to establish one identity and one brand, so that if Randy's going to do spirit wear for Dallas Lane, it's going to look with the same PMS colors and the same imagery.
So, it's basically the visuals.
Type setting, yeah.
Yeah, all it is.
Right, type, logo.
I wondered about the bulldogs and things like that.
Even Jan's, our team uniforms. I mean, though, there's not as much flexibility there, because the vendors are the vendors and...
And we're probably locked into the uniforms we have till they wear out also.
Well, but they're on a recycle basis.
But it's, and I actually think, every school like reinvents the wheel. I mean, it would be much more, A, it would look better, and B, it would be easier for people if there was just, you basically want to do a style.
To fully appreciate, you should check out Dobbs Ferry's site. They've launched their new logo, and it sounds kind of silly and trite, but it actually look, it makes their district look sharper.
Yeah, I got it, okay. That's just, that's helpful. Because I know...
It takes time. It takes time.
Okay, so shall we move on to our consent agenda? So, can I have a motion to accept our consent agenda? And that includes items 9.1, 10.1, 11.1 through 11.3, and 12.1. As always, we'll vote after we discuss. Can I have...
So moved.
Second?
Okay. So, any questions on any items? I believe there was one earlier. No? About the extra compensation?
Yeah, I just had, that was my question on the, where is that money coming from? Because presumably, this is a new need, newly identified need, so...
There is, or it, there is, there are some extra funds in the special ed tuition, special schools code. We had one, maybe two students that we thought were going to go for the full year, and they did not, so there's that funding that I can transfer. We're estimating the cost to be fifty-six, fifty-seven hundred dollars for this.
So, okay, thanks.
Okay. Okay, all right. Anything else?
Was there another question?
Was there another one? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, so that is it. Oh, right, my board of discussion, my Board of Education discussion item is, as I indicated to the board, I'm requesting to our administration to look into the possibility of expanding our school board to seven members, and the rationale for that is that we have a lot more work on our hands. Each meeting is, tends to be richer and fuller, at least by my judgment, and when we have one board member absent, when we're five, it feels like we're losing 20% of our board. If we had seven, it would be whatever, I can't convert one-seventh into percentage terms, but about 14%. 14%. It's, it is very effective in Dobbs Ferry, where they have seven board members. It's easier to man the committees. They have experienced a smoother go of it in terms of managing their overall process with seven board members, and I think it's worth us looking into it and talking about it. And the basic idea, as far as I know, is that we would have to add it to our ballot in May as a referendum item. It has to be voted on, but I think that needs to be confirmed and validated with our lawyer. And then the question is, when do we add those two members? We could add them next year, but then you'd have a fairly imbalanced voting process, because you'd have four members coming up all at once, and then my seat would be up, you know, shortly after that. My recommendation would be to add the two to the year that my seat is up.
Or you could do three and then two.
Three next year, and then two the following.
I'm not sure that, since it's a voter proposition, it seems it would be odd that we, as a board, would be able to dictate how it's implemented. It seems like, once you vote, you vote and you put them in. I mean, maybe there's provisional terms that someone would come out, but...
That's all we're going to find out.
Yeah. And the other thing is, interestingly, it doesn't have to come from the board. Any, any community member could put forth any proposition with just a ballot, you know, a certain number of signatures, so. And I wasn't even aware the board had the authority to do that. I thought we might have to go that route to do it as well, so.
We'll find out.
We'll find out.
All new, and he's using this time to raise what I think is an important issue.
Can I just, I mean...
I would love to hear your opinion.
I don't have opinions so much as I want to raise a couple issues to be aware of.
Sure.
One is, I think, it's been my observation, being, living in this community for the last 15 years, that we're not a community that's really deep in people willing to do these sort of jobs. We have an awful lot, especially in the village level, more so than the school district level, but we have a lot of elections where there's no, there's no, there's not a contested election. You know, you don't always have a lot of people willing to step forward. So, I think there's a seri, there is an issue in Irvington of the depth of the community. Not that we don't have a lot of willing, able people, but we don't necessarily have a lot of willing people, I think, to do it. And I think that's...
Definitely a consideration.
Less so, I think. My observation is Dobbs Ferry has got somewhat more active community than we do in a lot of areas, to its benefit, I think. And the other thing, I guess, is that, you know, we don't necessarily have to take as a given the amount of work the board chooses to take on for itself. I mean, that's largely a choice of division of labor, I think, between the board and the administration in some cases, like building and grounds, for example. So, you know, that's another, you know, that's another issue. I just flag those, those are things, if we move forward with this discussion, that it's worth considering.
Yep, and hopefully, there'll be ample time to talk about it in front of more people.
Can't talk about it in front of us.
Can't.
So, if I, I just may add to that. I've asked, I've already spoken with our attorney, who is preparing some guidance for the board on this subject, also anticipating that he could be present, looking to see if he can be present at the next board meeting for any related conversation. One piece of information that we have to really consider is the timing of all this, and the time to be able to prepare the resolution and the like, that we're going to need close guidance from Ingraham and Smith, but I think it's a decision that the board is going to have to make sooner than later. So, to think that we're going to be pushing it down the road a little bit, we have to be in the process of developing all the communications that would go out related to that.
If you, if we're going to go for this...
If the board was...
Because you could, because you could even wait until next year, right?
Yeah, if it's on your schedule, we don't actually, yeah, we decide in a year. So, I just want to say that there might be a fairly aggressive decision to be made with that in respect to, say, the budget adoption. It may need to occur well before that, but that's, those are all questions we're looking to get answered.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I have one other quick, it's more of a request. In the contents of budget, it's hard, it's, how do I say this? I think that I, I think that we might need an executive session regarding budgets to discuss the history of particular persons in the, in the district, because I think it bears on some of the kind of things that are important in this year's budget, and I think it's interesting, it would be interesting for the board to hear more discussion about certain individuals and how that all works through the new budget proposals.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely, and I know, we're well aware of the situation you're referencing, so we'll be strategic in how we're going to fit everything into the next meetings around that, because we have some other important executive subjects as well. But, yeah, we'll get it absolutely noticed, man.
All right, can I have a motion to, to close our meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry, John. Aye.
Second, yes, second.
Aye.
No, we're done.
We're done.
Go to sleep. We're all ready.